To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a little comment or a little housekeeping issue before we take on a bit. So this device here is called the Owl. It is a camera, audio and video recording device. It's playing up on the laptop here. This is, to my knowledge, the first recorded video in the Linton County Regular Meeting. So just so everybody's aware, the meeting is being recorded and it's going to be, Josh is going to give an update on it, but just so you know, it's a meeting, once it's adjourned, it's recorded. So just a little housekeeping. So we'll go to the approval of minutes. Everybody read the minutes? Any additions, corrections? Not entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that move.
Motion was made by Commissioner Michael to approve the minutes. They're second. Seconded by Commissioner Culver. Any more discussion on the minutes? Now that is the regular minutes and the special meeting minutes?
There's not a special minute.
Well, we'll just do it for the regular minutes.
No, I don't have them here for you to sign. Are you allowed to stop and sign?
Right. Yeah, so.
You can do a vote.
Well, we'll just consider that an approval vote since all the minutes were so short. Any more discussion on the approval of the regular minutes or any special meeting minutes? All those in favor of approval signify the same. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And it's approved. Approval of the agenda. Any additions, corrections, corrections? I did receive a text from Bob Zalman about five minutes before the meeting requesting five to 10 minutes. I guess the first question is whether or not we want that to be allowed and second, when we would put it on. I would suggest that it is going to be allowed, let's put on in the afternoon because the morning schedule is quite full. I guess the question would be whether or not we're going to approve the agenda as it is or amend the agenda to allow Bob Zalman's ten minutes. I'm assuming he's following the rules. Two forty-five, so is there a motion to amend?
I would also like to add something on if I.
All right, hold on then.
Weed cutting fees. I'm going to need to advertise that actually.
Now we're trying to be during the road department session.
Yeah.
Matter of order. So weed cutting fees, which will just be basically added to the afternoon session, the road department. Commissioner Michael?
Mark, you received from the core engineers this document.
I did not.
Okay, so I would like to discuss the inspection of Langmore's Bay.
Okay.
At some point.
Sure.
Pardon? Yeah, yeah, it's pretty rough to read. He said he would send a type one to Marles, but yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so I filed a motion for an order to kind of grant us right to end that nuisance out there. And it's been 21 days. He would respond to this moving. I filed paperwork for a proposed order, the proposed judgment affidavit, a default. He hasn't responded within the timeline. His service and serving those documents. I would assume the judge is going to sign the order in the next week or so and then report to issue the judgment and then we'll have the authority to go out there, carry on anything that he's built without our permission and clean up all the junk things.
So we'll see how it's going.
They did come down in May, late May, and she sent me a letter that stated that her opinion is that public nuisance.
So the process is ongoing.
Yeah, I would anticipate that we'll get it cleaned out this month.
All right, well, then probably don't need to add that to the agenda then. So I guess what we'll have is we'll have the motion of approve the agenda as it is or amend it to add the following additions, which would be Bob Zalman's concerns, weed cutting fees and the core of engineers inspection of Langmore's Bay, which I'm assuming we'll just probably put towards the end of the meeting.
Whatever.
Pick a specific time. Commissioner Holmes, the motion to.
With the amendment.
Okay, to amend the agenda as such. Is there a sentence to that motion? Commissioner Everly seconds the motion. Is there any more discussion on the amended agenda? Now hearing any of those in favor of the amended agenda signify the same. Aye. Aye. Opposed. Agenda approved. All right, old and unfinished business. We'll go to Josh here. He just gave us some updates on the video equipment and recordings.
So this camera here, Mary bought it last month, which got a grant to help pay for. So we went in the county and use it. That's how the meeting. As you can tell, it moves to whoever's talking or movement. So if you get up and do a dance, it's going to pick you up. Or when Marcy's coughing, it'll go to her.
All right, so it's going to be at the end, Marcy.
Yeah.
So does that, you say, that the counties can use or is this?
No, just, well, anyone in our, in department or county, if there's a report, you know, whatever, they can use this. I might find a place in the water or I'm not always here. So basically what my plans are, I called several counties, kind of figure out what they were doing, what works. Live streaming is a pain. We'll send up paying a media company to deal with that, whether it be back, which is cheap, other media companies. There are some free ones we could use, but however, we got to post links and meeting IDs every time we start this. It causes issues. We lose power or internet connection and no one's paying attention. So the best thing that other counties have found was just recording. Like this is Mercer County. They have a YouTube channel set up. They record the video. The next day they'll upload it to YouTube and it's free. And basically I would do two, two videos, one for the morning session, one for the afternoon and post it on here. It would take, it probably would be posted by the end of day, the next day or Wednesday because it's a high def video. It'll take a long time to upload. So this way people can look at, they can look at the agenda. They can scroll wherever they want to go, you know. People say it's better just to watch it later and see. So I have a YouTube channel set up already for us. So tomorrow, you guys approve it, I'll upload this to Linton County and then we'll put a link on our website that goes right to this YouTube channel. It doesn't cost anything. It'll, it'll store videos for a long time. I think Mercer County has like three or four years of, yeah, maybe four years ago, but it is saved on here. And they're obviously not as long as some bars, but I did check and it will upload longer videos. If you guys are good with that, that's what we're going to do. Hopefully the audio works good enough and picks up people that require it. We do have an extension. It's another 80 foot extension with a microphone for picking up other distances, but if you guys are good with that, I think that's the easiest route to go. Cause I see we're going to go this way. Post it to YouTube, get it the next day and put the link.
Whatever time allows, I guess. I mean, if it takes a day or two.
Yeah, we won't say that we're putting it next day because there might be issues. It's just a couple days.
Think if we were just access, if you're searching YouTube as well?
I can set it up where you can only view the video by clicking the link. So you'd have to go through our website, click the link and then you go to it. Like Mercer County, they actually have it set up where you just search Mercer County, like anyone can see it that way. So you can set it up either way. And I'll set it up where, you know, no one can edit it. There's things where you can download it and edit clips and all that. So I can stop that. I can just, you know, so no one's allowed to download it and edit any part of that. So nobody can take certain clips out of that video and say, oh, this is what they say, you know. So there's some few things we can do to, you know, where the public can't mess with it, so.
Because I don't have any issue with it being just being able to search it on YouTube. I mean, it's an open meetings record. I mean, you have any issues with that? It's attorney handsome. Why do you just know, you don't see any issues with it from the legal side? We have to go through our website or?
I don't think so. We guys don't even have it recorded now, so.
Right.
Go through the website. That's a big improvement.
And nobody can go in and do.
Yeah, I can send it so no one can.
It's protected.
No one can edit out clips, you know, and then all the editing and then it's like, oh, you know, I changed things around. So I can stop that. Since it's a high def video, it'll take, like if we do a four hour video in the morning, it'll take four hours to upload. Matt, I have three or four hours to upload each video because it's a high def video. Yeah, and then I'll show Marcy and the girls how to do a case. For some reason I'm gone. Someone else knows how to do it, so.
You're going to have a dedicated machine to just video?
Yep, we have a laptop. This uses a lot of data. I couldn't hook it up to my computer because if I'm doing GIS stuff, pull up a map, it'll take 10 minutes for me to pull a map. This is Marcy's computer. So we have a new decent laptop coming that's just going to be dedicated for this. It's not driving down anyone else's system as well. It was seventeen hundred bucks. It was like a thirteen hundred dollar machine, but she got a grant to pay for more than half of it, I think.
So Culver, you just gave me seven hundred dollars for easy compensation. So we're in at twenty-four hundred dollars plus what, about three thousand dollars for the year leave?
And then the cost due to YouTube thing?
Well, I think that kind of fit into what we were originally kind of budgeting for next year, so.
And then I want to bring up, while I was looking at videos of other counties, I noticed a lot of them were doing it in the courtroom. Well, I thought it bothered some people's ears. Mary actually contacted the, I think, state courts. They simply got approval if we wanted to do meetings in the courtroom. You just can't use the judges bench area back there. You know, you guys would have to sit at the attorneys that, you know, we got the whole, we can't use the, the security camera, you know, their camera system or anything like that. But so I guess I'll talk to them. Yeah, it's good to go. I guess if you guys want to do that.
I think it'd be a good idea to explore that. So I think it would just add a lot more overfull room. Like even today, I mean, we have five more people here looking at the books. So I think, I think going in there would be nice for the times when you do that meeting that's wrong. And you don't have to shift to another room all the time. So I think something we should explore.
If you guys want to do that next month, you nice to know so we can figure out how we're going to set up, you know, tables and this. And if I'm going to have to set up something else, because they got a TV in there, but I can't use that. I can't connect to that. So we'll need some time to figure out how to get it set up up there.
I guess I'm in favor of moving up to the courtroom. I think that would be beneficial for our meetings. I think so. Any other opinions on that?
Yeah, we need more.
I think we're all in agreement to explore that option. Well, I'd say go ahead and try it. And I guess unless you run into some huge pitfall where we can't do it, then we can always take yours. If we can get everything working, I think it would be beneficial to have it there. I would say so because I think if Joshua didn't set it up so we can be up there, you know, I mean, they can still utilize this room for waterboard meetings and other smaller venues, but I think for commissioner meetings, I think the well attended meetings, it's tough to fit this room. So I think it'd be a lot easier and add a lot more welcoming. I would say go for it. Okay. Well, it's nine fifteen, so we'll give it across by Clarence Hertz in Fund Historical Society. Friends here? I'll give him an extra minute here and not work.
I feel so. Do you have a cell phone?
I'm just hoping to find out this morning. Brent Edstrom's on here for losing clerk. All right, well, except we'll give him one extra minute here. Doesn't show up right in and that's, we'll move on. Well, I said we'll give him one more minute. All right, well, we'll move on to the agenda. It's fairly not coming. Yeah, so we don't have Brent Edstrom here for losing clerk. We don't have the representatives from the city of Linton, so I think rather than skip the two part hit, we'll just go to some of these things on that. Takes some time on the back of the meeting, so. First line item of the, of the lanes would be a renewal of the building permit for Thomas from the Richie Renke, add a five by twenty deck onto residence or an eight by thirty deck onto the shop, lot two nineteen of Beaver Bay, Arthur Stadium Properties, Lakeview two, section twenty-three, township one thirty-two, range seventy-nine.
Yes, it's good. They're building on the trailer in the shop. Not coming within these lines.
The renewal of a previously approved permit? Yes, we have a motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the renewal of the building permit for Thomas from the Richie Renke. They're second to that one.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Michael. Any more discussion on the renewal of the building permit? Any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor. Say aye. Aye. Opposed. Building permit renewed. Okay, item number two on this ladies is building permit for Sanger Farms to move in a fourteen by seventy mobile home in northeast quarter, the northeast quarter of section eight, township one thirty-one, range seventy-nine.
No, this is Deon's. This is Deon's. Deon's farm area. And they're going to put it down here closer to the credit, so it's Deon all the way.
Looks like it meets every setback requirement that I probably know of.
Yep.
My dad already built a, um, that's kind of a state attached, a mobile home. It's not going to be, because he asked to permanently attach it to reflect the apartment residence exemption. So it's not going to be eligible for that. So he gets paid twice the permit.
So yeah, the fixation, all those different, he knows about all the different, he knows about. Okay, so everything checks out and you guys are. Okay, well, hearing that is a motion to approve the permit for Sanger Farms.
I'll make that move.
Motion by Commissioner Michael to approve. Seconded by Commissioner Holmes. Any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor. Say aye. Aye. Opposed. Permit approved. Next is building permit for Caleb Rinsdiner to erect a twelve by sixteen storage shed on lot two oh four of Beaver Bay, Walter Stadium Properties, section twenty-three, township one thirty-two, range seventy-nine. I believe this is, this is up on top of Coyote Hill, I guess, that's the property.
Like you, yeah, altar. So there's a retaining wall that we approved a couple months ago. It's just sixteen feet away from the border or the property line. And then the shed's going to be further back. We'll be right about there. They haven't started anything yet, so the sheds will be good.
Retaining wall and your campers and all that?
Yep, the side of the campers and then behind the wall.
Motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the permit. Second to that motion. Seconded by Commissioner Culver. Any more discussion on building permit for Caleb Rinsdiner? Not hearing any of those in favor. Say aye. Aye. Opposed. Building permit approved. Okay, so this is, this is another one.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to skip to five since it's the same landowner, we have the same properties or neighbor.
Yes, it's the same.
Oh, this one says lot twenty-four. Yeah, this is lot two oh four. So it's a title?
It's, what is it? It's a title. Yeah, they're both on the permits.
Lot two oh four is for both, okay.
On the permits, they both say.
Okay, so building permit for Caleb Rinsdiner to place a sixteen by twenty pergola on lot two oh four of Beaver Bay, Walter Stadium Properties, section twenty-three, township one thirty-two, range seventy-nine.
Yep, so just in between two campers there, south of the wall. Maybe two and a half.
Okay. I'll make a motion for that. So a motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the building permit for Caleb Rinsdiner. They're second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Michael. Any more discussion on the building permit for Caleb Rinsdiner for a sixteen by twenty pergola? Not hearing any of those in favor. Say aye. Aye. Opposed. Building permit approved. We'll go back to number four. Building permit for Wesley Mascol to erect a sixty-seven by two hundred and sixty roof livestock building on the southwest quarter of section four, township one twenty-nine, range seventy-four.
Yeah, so Glenn signed, I had Glenn sign that permit too because they said it was his name, so.
I didn't do that.
Yeah, as long as Glenn signs, so, and we did.
So Wes is basically the tenant and Glenn Getfree is the owner?
Yeah.
Yeah, then both signatures are on the application, so.
Yeah, it's going to be right on the border of railroad property. He's actually working on purchasing the old railroad park here. There is no setback for, setbacks for border, you know, the side lots and agricultural land. You know, the only setbacks we got are Brian's local land is intersections, the roads. So I went out and we measured from the old railroad bed. It's a hundred feet wide, measured it fifty feet and flagged it. So he's going to stay within that, inside of that, so.
You own much, you own that property?
They, they own most of it from Strasburg down to Zeland.
Yeah.
Scattered. And some, there are a few people now that I got the name of, someone they can call who can start a process. It sounds like it's a minimum five thousand dollars and a twenty-five hundred dollar processing or something. So if you're only one little section over there. Some people are working on it.
Is considered bad enough that you know, or?
Yeah.
No one's, but there's no, okay. But it's, it's far enough off.
Yeah, it'll be off.
We have both signatures and here's the setbacks are in order, so. A motion to approve or deny the building permit for?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve the building permit. They're seconded. Seconded by Commissioner Holmes. Any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor. Say aye. Aye. Opposed. Permit approved. So item six is a building permit for John Van Woben to move a thirty by seventy manufactured home on the northeast quarter, quarter of section one, township one twenty-nine, range seventy-six. Yep, it looks like Ron Van Woben. Ron Van Woben is the owner. There's two signatures on here, so.
Yeah, before the year starts.
Setbacks are in order.
And again, when I'm sure he's been with all the time, the progress events exemption, that's a bit big for that. And he doubled because he, once again, he didn't own the country. He needed to get one.
And so he there, he should really qualify now. It's the mobile home issue or is it, or, Nelson, isn't it?
No, that's, that's other.
Okay.
I talked about it with him and he's going to check things out, but at this time he's not sure because they will have outside appointment.
I thought he was fine.
Yeah, but he helped out at auction and she works and so with other stuff, they're not sure if they qualify.
A bill of justice. Everything appears to be in order, so entertain a motion to approve or deny the building permit? Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve the building permit for John Van Woben. They're seconded.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Michael. Any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor. Say aye. Aye. Opposed. Permit approved. Brent, we'll take you if you're ready to go. Prefer if you sat on that chair on the end of the table there because we're recording.
Chairman, I think, am I going to question? They lost it here. If Clarence shows up, no, he can't get on the agenda anymore.
Clarence's time is over now, so it'll be, he'll have to be attending another meeting to bring us forward to some business.
How you been?
Doing well. How are you?
So you're here for you, you don't have to stay. Hey Brent, what was yours?
All right, well, good morning. It's nice to be back in Linton, so, for a whole while, since I've been down here, not quite a year, about a half a year, so. Just wanted to stop in, talk to you about what we're seeing at the regional council, what's going on across our organization, give an update on what's been happening over the last year. Couple things that have gone on. We, we, we're an agency that really likes to fill gaps within economic and community development. And so one of these happened late, early of part of twenty twenty, when Lincoln Social Services had some of the, had the issues that they had. They stopped doing property management and property management, you can do it for affordable properties, which are like your, huh, section eight properties, your USDA properties that have a lot of compliance, things that you have to work with. So it takes professional management to run these properties. And so when they stepped on the arena, a lot of properties in these smaller communities didn't have property management. We stepped in and did that, so. So we are doing that throughout the state. We're up to a little over five hundred units that we have right now already that we are managing. Um, we're up to, uh, a little over five hundred units that we have right now already, um, that we are managing. Um, and so we are not here to, like anything else, we do, we don't, we're not here to compete against the, the poor property industry on, on things, we're not here to do market rates, um, stuff, we are here to do the stuff that takes the special, the special stuff, like, like I said, that's compliance and stuff, so. If there are, uh, properties in, in the, in your county that you are aware of that they don't have property management, wanna get out of property management, that's something that we will work at, so. Um, so we are doing that, um, that, like I said, we've been doing that now for a year, um, which has caused us to go from employees to twenty-six employees over the course of the year, so. Um, the other thing that we have is we do have another revolving loan fund that we got as part of the CARES Act. And that was a million dollar revolving loan fund, didn't require any hospital community counties or or cities or anything like that, um, which all of Evans County is eligible for, Evans County is eligible for all of our programs, right? So, um, so there's, uh, a number of different things there, but, um, this one's a little bit, um, had a little less strings to it than some of the other stuff that we have. Uh, so if you do have businesses in the area that are, um, looking at opening, expanding, um, you know, absolutely have, you can get in contact with us and work with your local banks. Um, you know, Christian Turner is, is on our board, so, so she's well aware of our programs and stuff, but, um, and then Craig, the boss, you know, for our other boards, so. Um, we, we try to keep all your banks happy down here, right? So, um, so, but there again, we're here to partner with the banks, partner with the businesses to help you, and obviously with COVID, there's a little hole in, in business. Starting to pick up, hopefully with the, uh, inflation and stuff and the rates going up, it, it doesn't, uh, push it back down, so we'll see. But the nice thing is when rates go up, our rates stay the same. We're a interest rate lender, so rates can go up to eight percent on the, on the market rate stuff, we're still gonna be in that four, five, five and a half percent rate, so. So we can help the businesses do that, so. Um, just the usual charts and graphs that I have, we wanna pass those around. Uh, this is our impact graph where we show, uh, what we've done for the last, uh, since nineteen ninety, it has all of the projects. Uh, what you see in the yellow is a combination of all of our organizations. The blue section is just the regional council, and then the green section is, um, is the, uh, community works with some housing organizations, so. You can see that we've done some housing and some, um, and so, yeah. This should be more terrible, so. And so basically, if there's, um, for about every dollar that you guys have done, have provided in contributions, it, uh, ends up being about an eighteen dollar investment, our funds. More initial funds, so, um, this is the same one I, I print for you guys every year. Um, the other things I have here for you, this, this, for your information or for to hand out to people is, I do have, um, our brochures. Keep all the examples, hand those out, those are the new and updated ones, um, as well as I, uh, and I guess, like I said, it has all of our programs in there and also has contact cards for our, our staff. So anybody that would have any questions on the projects that are coming up, um, absolutely give us a call. They're not, we're not calling the right person, we're a very small office still, so we'll get them where they need to go, so. Uh, the last thing, the other thing I have is the, our annual report, which most of you should have gotten emailed to you. If you did not, um, now you have a hard copy of it. Um, yeah, like I said, that's just the, an update that we did over the past year. Our fifth year ends in September, so it's a, you know, a few months out, but new one will be coming out, so. Uh, the last thing I'd like to talk about is, um, you know, it was back there a year ago with Ashley, and we were talking, and Ashley is on the, rental leave right now, so she's a little, little boy, so. So we're down, we're down a staff member right now, but, um, so she makes me do all of the, uh, all the division. Uh, but anyway, we got money from EVA to do, uh, to, um, look at the COVID response, um, on the federal level, state level, county level. Look at, uh, disaster plan, see what's going on, um, on those, see what went well, what went bad. We had surveys done, uh, we had, uh, town hall meetings, one of which was here in Lytton, um, where we had, we pulled people together uh, from the community to talk about what went good, what went bad. Um, we've, uh, taken all that information that we have, and we put that into, into a report, because it's gone to EVA. Um, and we'll give you copies and all of that. Keep looking at it. If you look at, like I said, there's a whole bunch of, um, information on how we, uh, got to where we were, all the different steps that we took. That you can, can read through there, see the, um, survey results and things like that. The biggest thing to look at on that is page, um, page seventeen, where we talk about our next steps and what we're seeing, uh, what, what kind of needs to be done uh, to have a better, uh, response in the next, uh, if and when this would ever happen again, a pandemic would happen again, I think. There were a lot of lessons that were learned, uh, already, uh, but we looked at this, and, and one of the things that we, we saw was obviously collaborating better with, with, uh, up divisions. One of the big things was communication, right? When it first hit, nobody knew who to call or who to talk to, and businesses were, were having to call three, four, five different people and get it run around. We wanna make sure that as much as possible, we can reduce that. So we're gonna work with the counties, um, with the emergency planners, to make sure that we have those contact, contact information, they have ours, we have theirs. Um, so when they, when somebody does get a call, they can call us and we can direct it to what they need, right? So, um, other things where, that we looked at was obviously housing became a major issue, and how do we, how do we, um, ensure the housing, uh, of people, especially at-risk people that are losing their job because they're, they're, you know, having to stick with it, have you? And then childcare is the other one. And so we're looking at developing some strategies on that, there's a number of different programs that are coming out, uh, RAP program that we just applied for, um, that will have some, um, some funding, more funding available for childcare to, across the nation, childcare is a horrible thing to try to finance and try to keep up with, right? So everybody, we're, we're trying to work on that one, so. Um, but that's really, so you can look through that report, like I said, um, we, uh, we'll be sending that to EVA, uh, this year. Uh, as far as the, uh, the county dues, we're keeping those where they have always been at point one five mil, we're not where I was at the last five years, prior to that, they were point two. Um, we use those, uh, in order to do things like the EVA, um, this, this reporting like this, um, and the research that we do that, in order to, to provide technical assistance for businesses, we have to remain in economic development district, through the economic development district. So your county dues, basically, in order to do that, we have to get match, if matching funds to, to get the, the funds from EVA. And that's really how we use your, your county dues. Um, so we do appreciate that, it allows us to do what we do to help the businesses in your community, um, as well as now we're getting more and more into housing, I believe we just financed a, a house, I believe, a health fund, a housing in Lytton, um, this year, so. Um, so we do, we are the gap filler, uh, and we do appreciate the, your, your support of, of your organization. Um, and as always, if you have questions, if you have projects, if you have things that are coming up, um, you know, feel free to call us, um. That's part of what we get the EVA money for, to help you guys. And not, not just to, to fund projects, but also for, for, um, research information, if there's stuff you need to, to know or want us to look up, we will do that for you. Um, and so just let us know, we have things coming up and certainly, um, we jive with us, so. That's what I got. Hopefully I made it to my fifteen minutes.
We have plenty of time, we're pretty, we're pretty efficient.
Brett.
I don't have a question.
Mainstream initiative, they have been working on it, and I'm sure that's still in effect. But my question is, taking on this housing management, the focus isn't gonna be shifting away from mainstream initiative, uh, more housing, is it? I mean.
No, we have, you know, we have, like I said, that's why we increased our staff, um, we've always had three organizations. And so we, we have, we hired a director, so basically we just have, it was an initial one, and that's where our, our staff is coming in, so. It's not going to change, uh, the way that the regional council works in, in, with, with, obviously, that is growing as well. And so we've actually added, that's where we added Ashley to the staff, and, and so, no, we, there's, yeah, we, we, we hire additional people, we don't do their services.
And, and the SBA, of course, you know, it's a devil through you, right?
It is.
And I think a lot of people that wanna get into business or wanna try a venture in business aren't aware of that, and I'm preaching that to people that are thinking about it, that, you know, you guys are a big help for that, to get that business up and running.
We definitely appreciate that, like I said, if you have those ones, because you get a lot of time to get that stuff coming for a plan, you're totally aware of it. And like I said, that's why we have, um, a couple of bankers, and we, we have bankers on the boards, we also, Sharon Jang is on the board. You know, so hopefully that we are making those connections, and that's what we're gonna talk through. You know, a lot of times, I mean, we try to market, but we're nonprofit, so it's not like we can be out there yet.
And Matt's always available, correct?
Yes.
Matt will come down or that, uh, moment's call.
We will always come down and meet with businesses, Matt, we have three lenders, um, um, Matt, Derek, and Ashley, and any one of those, or all three of them will come down. Um, that's just, um, um, yeah, absolutely.
That's all we have for you.
I'll probably be there.
Yeah, you'll probably go there.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Brett? Huh?
Have a great day.
Thank you, Brett. Larry, there's a chair here, if you want to sit down, on the end here. Here you come with a chair, don't you think you have it? Jim, floor is yours.
Oh, you got one, okay. Okay, yes, I'm gonna just let you know that this is our, these first two pages, we can look at a little bit later if you'd like, and it's the airport layout plan and our capital work for years, or next two years. But the budget is the thing that we're here about today, um, and probably one of the simplest things is just to look at the last page. And what that is, is just a recap of, of what we have budgeted for the year. In our general fund, we're starting out, we estimate a balance of about eighty-three thousand. And revenues are seventy-nine thousand, expenses a hundred thirty-three thousand. So our expenses are, uh, over revenues by fifty-four. We're transferring now sixty thousand to our capital improvements projects. And the, about the maximum amount we can levy, right now, only the citizens of Lytton pay property taxes on the airport. And the maximum we can levy is about that ten thousand, I don't have the exact valuations yet, but that's what we levied last year. So that gives us a cash deficit of twenty-six, twenty thousand, um, to operate this company here. So what we're basically asking for is two mils. If the county could levy two mils, um, on the county, Linton already, levies a maximum that can be levied by a building entity, there's four mils worth in the airport. Linton already levies that on its citizens, and that's where the ten thousand's coming in. And in speaking with Marla, I think she told me that the market value of the remainder would be about thirty-nine thousand.
Right, because only figure, what the minimum for the airport would be, you can include tax evaluation from the city. So, because the county's is about forty-one, one million minus what we can see.
So, so if we ask, if the county did levy two mils for the airport, we would be able to operate a lot, that would go as well for me, at least to have about a fifty thousand dollar cash reserve at the end of next year. If it's going to bring in that seven to seventy-eight percent, or five to seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, and in looking at, we talked about your cash reserves, and your notes tells you that's very high, that's about seventy-five percent. Which would be a hundred and forty-five thousand, would be what we should be carrying, but we normally carry fifty. So with that being said, we, we've been able to struggle by in the past on what we can levy in the city. It, it is a bit of a struggle, um, we've never been cash rich by millions. Um, but we, and the county has helped decide before with a project, I think, three years ago, for twenty thousand dollars. We didn't have enough to do that project. Some of the big differences in the operations of the airport right now, in the past, we had a fixed base operator, we worked out there every day. And was there to do the, the, the daily operations and management and maintenance of the airport. We no longer have a fixed base operator there. The other thing that that business did was run the fuel sales. And so right now, the airport has become a fuel dealer too. And that's what's really created the cash shortage right now. This year alone, we spent over fifty thousand on fuel. We don't have history on it to know what we're gonna be spending, and we anticipate next year it's gonna cost us about seventy-five thousand. Because this year, the jet fuel we bought, we bought at two fifty mils, way much higher. So I think those are the, those are the two biggest things that changed the operations, was that next year, we're looking at having to pay somebody to maintenance. Right, and we, we budgeted fifteen thousand for that next year, um, to do the maintenance on it and some of the management. And we budgeted seventy-five thousand, maybe a hundred for the fuel. As of now, actually, um, we have an agreement for each of them, he's doing his own term, and June basis, while we're putting everything out out there, and he's all right. Yeah, he actually comes down from Houston, and our board members also, uh, just all the time, as well, if, if somebody needs to get into, or things like that. Travis Doctor, um, is gonna be assistant, who helps in that area. So that's what we're doing right now through the end of the year. So if you look at, at page two, or, or the expenses for the airport for twenty twenty-two. We, we don't have anything estimated, you know, we didn't pay anything in twenty twenty-one, we're not paying anything in twenty twenty-two, and we think that's a fifteen thousand for next year. We kind of figured that at about, uh, ten to twelve hours a week, is kind of its average, it's a little bit, depends, you know, how much we want to use to get. So it's always now. Yeah, so, um, and just our routine craft ceiling and things like that, none of these expenses are out of the ordinary, if you just look at what our averages have, uh, that we look at. When we get into our capital improvements, which, to, to let you know, because we're transferring out that sixty thousand for that, that's what this sheet is right here. Uh, the Linton Airport is actually a federally funded airport, um, and basically what that does is if we, we get funded for FAA projects, our capital improvements, we get an entitlement every year of a hundred fifty thousand. With that being said, all of that goes towards capital improvements. So not, not all local airports are federally funded, and it's a little bit hard information to get now. You also have to keep a certain number of aircraft based out of your airport to maintain that funding. So this sheet right here basically tells you what our capital improvement plans is over the next ten years. And at the bottom, you can just see that the total project cost estimated to be, um, they don't have loan level numbers here, but it's the loan that where it says twelve, four point eight million dollars in, in projects over the next ten years. The FAA federal will pay four point three five six million of that. The state does pay two hundred and forty-two thousand, and our responsibility is two hundred and forty-two. So if you're wondering whether you get the figures on that, on the budget for the capital improvement project. Um, next year, we're looking at doing apron rehabilitation and improving that access road. At a cost of about one million, I actually now they're coming in at two nineteen, that's just two hundred and twenty thousand. Our share of that's gonna be about sixty-one thousand next year. And Roger can speak a little bit about that project and what he's doing, um, and what the airport will be offering.
If you look in the color sheets that Sharon had handed out, the current airport, this is what we see, and this is what we planned for ten years ago to look for that. The rust-colored buildings are not there, there's space for them, but they're not there. Um, the taxiway, which is a long skinny one, is not there also. It does start, where the big, the big square here, that is all there, the airport hangar. The apron, which is this area right here, is what's going to be replaced. State comes down and does a, they check the gravel or the asphalt, and it's to the point where it can't be rehabilitated anymore, and so it has to be replaced. The area around the field depot will be concrete, so, because fuel and asphalt don't fit along very well together, so it doesn't stand out very well. The crack seal will, is the whole airport, the airport, the main airport, or the runway is seventy-seven hundred feet. Um, eventually, they're going to extend that to five thousand feet. Uh, two reasons for that, we can take heavier, they're gonna widen it to a hundred feet at seventy-five now. And also extend it, two reasons for that, heavier aircraft, so more aircraft, and we have. The reason that that will be a plus is that a lot of the, uh, some of the medical flights, they're running King Airs, the King Airs can land here and take off, but for their insurance purposes, it's not the proper length, so they have insurance. So the insurances don't like to pay everything they have. The same thing with a lot of the planes are getting bigger, so the same thing is that for their insurance purposes. They don't want to fly out here because they can't safely take off their portfolios. Um, currently, we're, we're flying, there's three sprayers up there right now, three different companies spraying up there. Um, Sharon just said that there was another one that came in and asked if they could fly out there, how congested it is. Um, it is possible for all four of them to fly out of there. But we feel that the county should pay their fair share because, um, the spraying does not benefit the city itself, it does a little bit because pilots will come in and they may stay overnight here. That type of stuff, it's, it's pretty minor, but the main benefit is the act business people throughout the county, uh, who they spray. Who are they, who are they charged to, what they're charging them to spray? What do, what's the city charge?
What, what is required, again, anybody can spray on there, okay. But for the aerial applicators, we do charge them to, to, they have to fill out an application there, an applicator's fee. That's five hundred dollars. We also require a three thousand dollar refundable deposit, so that, you know, we're not familiar, working with, um, in case there's any kind of a chemical mess or anything, you know? That's refundable. And then they do rent, they lease some space for, to set up their operation, you know? I mean, we, we don't give anything for acre, anything like that, it's just a five hundred dollar applicator's fee. And then they lease a lot to set up their, their fuel, their, their equipment. You know, uh, some of our other income, just to let you know, is there, um, is some ag land associated with the airport that we, we do. We do rent that out, um, for crops. Um, one of the caveats with that being is they can only do small grains. You can't have any raw crops around the airport, things like that. So that is some of our other income, is that we do rent the ag land out, and then that we have one premium or one hangar that has some things in that stuff that's still renting out. And when we talk about other potential income. Um, the ailerport predominantly, as Roger has said, is used by aerial applicators. And then we do, we have others that pass through and fill, um, fill things like that. And then our medical flights that are more of a home, I think, I didn't mean to interrupt Roger, but.
Um, the only other things is that, you know, the airport is pretty well equipped, it does have a, it's a PAPI system for people landing. It's a PAPI system, it is, it has lights on it, if you're too low, it'll have different colored light, or if you're too high, it'll have different colored light. Um, so it, it's a, it is also GPS, um, landing capability. And there is also an AWAS system, which is a weather station. You guys can call him, or anybody can call him for a weather report. Uh, sky cover, that type of stuff, and that's, all those expenses come back on us, because we had, the AWAS system we had, they, it also tells how light the clouds are. And we, that board went, oh, that was like thirty thousand dollars just for that story.
Yeah. When Roger said that AWAS, the weather on the news were they'll have in Linton, that comes from the airport, um, AWAS.
We just put in a lighting system, a whole electrical system, two years ago. And that was six hundred thousand dollars. But again, you know, ninety percent of it's paid by federal, five percent by the state, five percent by the state. So, the bank for the buck is, is very good for, for the county and for us.
So what is the, uh, what are the requirements, or what are the, I guess the central court, can, can we create a note for that for the county, or is that both, or?
Was it, was it one time?
One time.
No, it would be a mill levy in.
Yeah.
Here we are.
Go ahead. We don't have nothing now like that, but.
No, we don't have an airport that we can, but we can, it's in the central court, we.
So we can just pay.
I think, I, if I'm not, I don't think it has to be voted on by the people, I think you guys can just adopt the resolution.
The resolution up to four mills, if you wanna go beyond that, and that is, sort of, back in touch, I'm gonna leave that. County. So Lint- Linton would be included in that, is their last.
Look at the name of the county.
And we think it can, at this point in time, that we feel it can operate efficiently and we have these expenses. Or can we review again what's your project, when we just go moving forward, that makes the most sense, is what we would think.
Well, I bet they could all come about, tell. Spray and everything else, so, you know, I think it's something that you should help, you know, fund or, you know, yeah.
So can I go ahead and make a motion towards that?
Yeah, I guess at this point, we'll entertain a motion, I have, you know, the only, I guess the only question would be basically if you're going to be motion for it, you would be making a motion to adopt a resolution? Which would have to be drafted. And then you'd have to specify what the resolution's gonna obtain as far as the mills. I think that was probably, I mean, because it's pretty much understood that it would be a, it would be a creation of a mill for the county, you mean this water port, basically, or the ball, or? I think at this point, the, probably not, because I'm sure the central court allows up to that limit, like Joe said, so if up to four, up to four mills, it could be created by the county, and then anything above that, you would have to, yeah. So, I guess, entertain a motion to adopt a resolution to create a county airport mill, which was specified to be.
Yeah. I'll make a motion on that.
Commissioner Hall makes a motion to adopt a resolution with the creation of a county airport mill levy of two mills? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Commissioner Wykel. Is there any more discussion on the airport levy? I guess my only thought is since it's a creation of a new mill, I kind of feel like I'm not, I don't feel comfortable creating a mill. I mean, I, I don't disagree with the merits of it, I don't want to call it. And I think it's probably the case with everything in the county, it's more becoming county beneficial than just individual towns, we're just getting so small. So I don't disagree with that, but I'd rather see that voted over, just like a lot of other guys. I guess that's my opinion on it. Is there any more discussion on the mill levy? Not hearing any. Let's sort of roll call, vote on this one, so Commissioner Wykel?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebley? Commissioner Culver? And I both know as well. Mill levy, resolution is not adopted. But, with that being said, I think the other question would be whether or not we want to put it on the ballot, which I guess I am in favor of. So, we're still here, would we wanna?
Something they would have to pursue.
Well, even that, I think that's what the county would have to do, and that's where I'm saying that we would probably have to draft ballot language and put it on the ballot, which I.
And that would have to, if you wanted on the general election ballot, you'd have to do that now. You know, the deadline is six.
Yeah. I guess in my opinion, I believe that's where it should go. And I would be in favor of that. That's really.
With that being said, so if it does go to now, would that be for November, and then it were going to, like, if that were true?
No, it would get voted on in November, and it wouldn't go until next fall, the levy.
So.
They wouldn't have a levy this year.
With, with that being said, is there any way that, and you're going to discuss, that you could probably, but it's something for us, it's very helpful, it's in the past episode. Otherwise, we'll have to wait and find.
What, what do you do that one year, we gave twenty thousand?
We, we gave us twenty thousand for the, the one, when we did our, or maybe for, whatever project it was, a couple of years.
Seven with that.
Was that amazing?
It was the runway payment, yes. Yeah, we have the runway a couple of years ago, that number short cash for that project, for twenty thousand. Right now, we're, we're gonna be, the twenty thousand will give us a three-year-old cash balance. You know, so I, I don't know, we could do a little bit more, so we have some cash reserve, but.
No, we do, we do also have the art of funding, which is something that you could possibly utilize, or something like that, which, you know, would be another, would be another.
If, if there's something that you could do to help us get through this next year, if I was having trouble making money.
And when, when you have these sprayers coming, you don't have to apply a fee of five thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, we just, we, we charge the five million dollar applicator's fee. And we use the spot, uh, a minimum square footage of, uh, six thousand square feet at sixteen cents a square foot for probably a hundred and twenty dollars.
They also need a certain amount of airplanes, so they can't really, they have to be pretty competitive with the pricing, otherwise they're gonna lose that airplane.
Yeah, because in, in order to have air numbers or plane numbers based on Linton, we have to kind of, as Joseph explained. And we have to save, they, they had twelve aircraft, and we're gonna lose that federal designation and funding.
Well, for the sake of time, so we can keep on moving, I think, uh, I guess the one, I, I think the option to look at the funding this year is possible, and I think going forward, I think we should create some ballot language and put it on the ballot. I, I, I'm not against it, I just don't feel that that's probably the right way to create the mill, so. I guess the question, I would, I would entertain a motion to uh, create ballot language and put it on the ballot, just if we want to, not to want to see some of these other things. We want to make that motion, make it official. If you don't want to put it on the ballot, I guess no motion's necessary.
So Joe, to do a ballot, you, we have to adopt a resolution with the ballot language, right?
Yeah, yeah. Motion to adopt the resolution to put the ballot, or to put the issue of creating the mill levy.
Is that motion? Commissioner Hall makes a motion to adopt a resolution to create a county airport mill, which would be approved to go on ballot or, or proper order, you know, basically to place it on ballot. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Wykel, is there any more discussion? Any more discussion?
And a question.
As spoken.
What, what's gonna happen near the airport, this, that, this failed, that are your plans, is that that the airport dry out and blow away?
Well, I'd say that's gonna be up to the people, especially the ones that are.
You guys are here to make decisions like this, too.
Mm-hmm. Any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor of that motion, seconded by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. All right, thank you, thank you. City of Lincoln, you're on for the side hill, the only side of the courthouse.
Thank you for the, uh, doing the roadwork today. And, Mr. Ed, the reason that we don't want to overcharge the people flying in is because the only way they can make it up is to charge you, passing that expense. The farm's got a big.
And they have to just keep on, yeah.
Morning work, morning.
Hey, as you can see, with the pictures on our, this is side hill, in the north of the courthouse here, in the north of the city shop. Um, it's very steep, um, it's been top fought doing something for years, nothing's ever been done. Well, as you can see, one of the pictures, it washed out last year, and we cemented it. And as you can see, another picture, this spring again, almost a year later, it washed, it keeps coming down and washing out. So it isn't, the, uh, answer isn't just to keep filling it in. We're, we're proposing taking this whole side hill and cementing it out, and Chris, uh, is his estimate here, if you've got questions, Chris can answer them for you. Um, it's, it's, it's also a hazard, we mow it every year, every two weeks, I should say. Uh, guys walking along the side of the lawnmower, he's, he's, it's very steep, if you go out and look at it, very steep. Um, you know, every, every two weeks.
Every two weeks, he owes it.
He's gotta try for every week.
Uh, it seems to be going to cut it, but he never builds a city board, but he gets, if somebody gets hurt, something, you know, it's, it's a bad deal.
So is, is your plan is to concrete that full side hill?
The boulevard.
The boulevard, the boulevard.
But it's, it's from, it's a, it's all a half a block. And so, and so the, the problem happened when they put the sidewalk in, is water comes down that, round that sidewalk. And we're, we, fragile rains landing for some reason, after being dry last year. Well, there's a crack, and somebody puts some, try to fix in that crack, or whatever was washed out before, but what happened is that water's getting between the cracks there. And you're running underneath it. And from the one picture, the hole looks good there, and after this last rain we had last week, where we were, when we're gonna beat the sidewalk down. And half that dirt is down, no problem. So if we don't adjust, or address this sooner rather than later, potential for a lot worse of a hill blown that out, you know what I mean?
So what is the, what is the plan for retaining that concrete, I mean?
My plan, I guess, we've, uh, you know, brutally, I guess, is have Russ Walter come out with his excavator, and say, if, and set it with his laser cut over four inches all the way long, and I will cement, uh, as a rebar, and there, four inches back in.
You're not gonna have any type of tie pillar into the, on the back, to the back of the curve?
Yeah, you're gonna have to, because that whole slab will eventually move.
Exactly, on top and bottom, I want that, uh, that's enjoying it.
Okay.
And then dowel in. The bottom of that's gonna dowel in, because of the way that the, the hill's gonna push it into the curve anyway. Outside, I want that sidewalk, and that never to move like that. Because what we need to do is get a nice tight seal there, make sure that, and I'll run by, uh, Nomoflex one way or another, that's my expansion. And we can even seal that joint down for a little second, just to make sure that water stays. When it sheds off, it comes down that side of that concrete and into the curve as fast as it possibly can without undermining anything else and creating more potential hazard down there. It's a very, very labor-intensive process. Because it's at forty-five, I mean, putting cement down flat is okay.
Yeah.
I mentioned this to my wife, and she said, hell no. And she's my number one finisher, so.
That's gonna have to be, um.
I, I do have to pull and cement the finisher, so it is more money for me as far as labor goes, that's why I make the expenses, because a lot of these guys, I don't know.
You said, that, because, I mean, it's going to.
That's, yeah.
I mean, keep it, I mean, keep it for a week.
Yeah.
You have four, that's.
See, I have two. And we're working on, you know, we did that, we did four, you know?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. But I mean, it is, it's just.
And I'm not gonna do all my shots, you know what I mean, I wanna break this up, so we can do either ten or fifteen foot squares. And then it's not cut it out, we're sending, I mean, maybe put some down one night, room finish. But we, we want that water shed out there as fast as we can. And I don't know what's gonna happen downstream once this is all done, but that's, it shouldn't have anything down there, I wouldn't think. Because they thought we're doing a trying to hold the hill up. Same little water comes off through regardless of everything. Not unless you wanna rip wrap it with rock. And that's why, that's way more labor-intensive, and, and it's not guaranteed it's gonna hold. Here, I'm actually gonna put five really free bar in there, uh, two foot on the center, so that way we, we have a grid of, of some strength in there. And less concrete's been pretty good for me so far.
See that one picture on the bottom there, this one? This is the top hill, this is a rock, and this is where it washed out before, we did cement there before, a couple of years ago. It just becomes issues with the rock, and somebody hasn't talked about putting railroad ties in there. Um, you're just putting a band-aid on there, but.
And we did, there was some talk of getting retaining wall there too, I, I mean, I didn't price on the retaining wall, but it's gonna be a heck of a lot more labor, I would say. And I don't know, does the city watch, you know, with a wall right behind the dirt like that, that high? Because they're essentially gonna have to at least go four feet high, it's gonna blow. And then, then you still have to get anchored into the hill, so this way, we're just sloping it all over it, and letting the water run down the tree like that.
Now, we didn't get a estimate, there's, there's two holes in there. Uh, one is a light, one is a light hole in the top picture, one is a light hole, and one is a, a hole. Uh, one is a light, one is a light pole in the top picture, one is a light pole, and one is a, a hole of electricity for the shop, and one to another house. I checked with them, you know, about moving those, but they haven't got back to me.
Which one?
Both of them, just.
I see the yellow, where's the other one, that one up there?
That's a light, and that could be moved easy enough.
The light would be on that other pole.
Well, the other one, I thought they could go on top of the hill, and that's why we're then due to come and look at it, I mean, I.
Basically, why I want to pour model board, is potential wiring, you know, and, and create that problem again, because even water, at a winter time especially, it's gonna freeze. And freeze, so you're gonna stay a bolt on your, uh, your mobile bar, and you just, you know, you gotta fix it.
Have we talked about, uh, maybe getting someone to bore, bore the line, get rid of the pole and bore the line? I was, I was gonna suggest, and I made a virtual too, is since you're going this far, are you gonna try to relocate poles, possibly. Putting some of these, these power lines underground, because you could, you know, more than likely, probably bore one or two of them, and maybe trench the third, since that mobile bar will be kind of under construction, or. Or bore them all, and get them up to those homes?
Well, I think, uh, John, when he looked at, when John looked at, he thought we could move that one pole up on the top of the hill. And then the light pole, I think he said, move it outside to spray, move it from the east, or, or east, yeah. But he said, he didn't think, he doesn't have a price at the time, or what's it gonna cost, or do you move their stuff? But, like I said, when I said, now is, you gotta get, get on this, because. I went and answered rain the other day, and like I said, a pile of dirt down my, my house, and this, this, following up the hill.
One of the trouble with the rip wrap wall too, is you still have vegetation growing there, which has to be maintained, which is part of the reason for this process too, is it's almost impossible to maintain.
It's dangerous.
It's, it's.
It's dangerous, I mean, right.
And it, and it's proven that it still washes out too, I mean, maybe not as bad, but it's still gonna wash out as well.
It's, it's got started, and now it has an opening, and it's just gonna keep growing, it's still.
And when you go out, I mean, if you do take a chance to go out, look here, looks like there's quite a bit of watershed out the north side of the building, it follows that sidewalk. The grass is just a little bit higher than the sidewalk, so it uses the electric gutter, and it goes down, and this is that first weak point, and it just washes, so. Any kind of recompaction, or any, I mean, it'll just wash out in front, or wash out next.
We talked, I mean, sort of the top, and I was trying to get that water shoe out, but then you're just opening up down the hill. You know, pretty soon it's gonna be washed out, people will ask, and they're putting all the tents, putting in, and people will wash out there, you know. I think the best is just do the whole hillside and be done. Um, I think I measured two hundred and forty feet from the corner all the way up to the top. So that's really, uh, it's ten feet roughly from the sidewalk to the back of the curb, it's twenty, twenty feet as well, so. So it is labor intense, and that's where everybody's like, oh, and, you know, so I gotta find people crazy enough to do that. Because it is gonna be, like I said, pouring out too, and then bringing it up that hill. Yes.
So what is, what's the city asking for, basically?
Well, I guess, uh, we had the meeting last night, and it said, if the county could have, have play, half the bill, and the city pay half, means we all can share this block. That's what we're looking at, but this, what do we got here, forty-five hundred, you know, I'm just throwing another. Five, uh, forty-five, but five, talk another five thousand for the NDU, roughly, I don't, I don't got a fix for that, so probably talking fifty thousand, maybe. And that's an estimate here now also, I mean, since that's digging in your twenty-five. So, I mean, the county and the city, twenty-five each. You know, but I just, we wanna get addressed, because we don't get it in the next few weeks here, six weeks or what? We're gonna have, we're gonna, because where, where you have the issues is in May. In May, when there's all the water runoff and stuff, you know, that's when both of them is washed out, is in May, almost a week apart from each other.
Well, the timeline is due this late summer, but.
Yeah. So we're getting into the wet season.
As soon as possible, yes.
Where can we get the money?
I don't, I would just have to do it out of general fund.
Well, this would be something, couldn't we utilize the ARCA funds for that as well?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, this is, since it's kind of a one-time.
One-time expenditure.
I would certainly use the ARCA funds.
Well, I, I believe it's probably the availability. So I, I guess, in that regard, I would say there is money available for that. Would you agree?
I don't know. Well, we haven't spent any of it yet, just a little bit.
Do you think that'd be the best solution to try to fix this?
Yeah, because we talked, I mean, looked at, sort of, with the bottom of the hill, on the side of that, that's rip wrapping up, looking at vegetation. And I said, well, Chris, yeah, he said, oh, you didn't want that, Chris. We need to, we need one year. Right, right, so.
Right, it's, 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 it's one of your time for the recording, so. Well, I mean, and the best thing too, I mean, if you were to create a retain wall, you'd almost have to add some kind of a rail or something. That's, I mean, that's a pretty steep fall, I'm just looking at it this morning, if you don't maintain that slope, and you're gonna have to, if you do any kind of straight wall, that's forty-five feet at this point, and that's an ugly drop.
And I don't know, do we need anything on the, from the sidewalk, was as far as like safety now, when this, the county or the city, I would say somebody stepped off, then moved on that hill. Who would be liable then? Because they're gonna say, well, who poured this? And I can say, well, we're trying to protect the hill, so it doesn't wash out, so how do you?
That's gonna be a lot slimmer.
Correct. But like I said, I mean, is there some thing we have to do then to prevent people from walking out into that sidewalk at that point?
Well, that's probably something, definitely that's a check.
Well, we don't have railings around the top, but, but there's always, you can always save yourself the heck out of it, like. It's not like it's gonna be eighty-eight, given the way, because the hills, uh, they're not David Gray, I mean, you're talking four inch foot. You definitely surpassed the eighty-eight part of it.
Is there some, no kind of pavers or something where you can kind of stagger that up?
I'm just afraid of something pushing that back out. Pavers, you have cracks, you have potential water gain underneath there, basically, that's what happens with light pole here, water got a chance to get underneath it. This way, if we're pouring it in concrete on both sides, you can silicone that top joint, like I said, seal that up, so all that water sheds down. And I don't believe it's, once it hits the curb, it's gonna scoop right past, I don't think it's gonna wash out underneath the curb. Because you would've seen that already by now. Right now, it's just kinda washing underneath the sidewalk, truthfully. But it's, I mean, not dangerous, every time it rains, maybe it just gets worse.
I'm just, I'm just worried, you know, you say cock to cock, but eventually, how the concrete must, comes loose, and then the water's gonna get in behind and drops to push it out.
It'll probably be maintenance every couple of years, you have to go back and check your concrete.
Yes, yeah, so then I do get some of the best stuff I possibly can get from structural, like, I want this to last at least ten years or better, you know. And concrete is actually hard to get, so we, I bought two cases right away, just to make sure I had enough of the.
So you, so you would caulk it too once it's done?
Yes, yeah, that's part of the material, like I said, I wanna get that no more flex in there, because I have a cutter that cuts a half inch groove off the top, so I'll have to, when you're done, just rip that open. Like I said, it'll be a soft cut every ten feet. I want it to look nice, like you said, I don't want it just, something dramatic, like, gosh, it'll be that.
Like I did before here.
Well, I mean, we tried. We said, oh, they got it.
Shouldn't you guys, we put this piece in before, we said, well, we'll, we'll try and fix it. And you guys did a great job.
Probably did a good job, but then, then it's free. Maybe we're gonna have back storms that are gonna come down like that.
About the whole parking lot, everything from the courthouse here, holding there, you know. Just one other quick question, I guess, just curious, would, this is just for the sake of discussion, would it be easier to maintain if there wasn't a sidewalk on that hill, since it is a lot to maintain on that slope? Would that somehow create a better situation, or is it just?
But you still have to prevent the water from running down the hill somewhere. You know, when you take the sidewalk, oh, but then, you're still gonna have watershed coming down there, so, truthfully, you want the water to run down that sidewalk, and to get off the hill.
But it would be, would it be create, easier to maybe create some kind of gutter along with your project, rather than maintaining the sidewalk, is my point.
You think, but we better outside of it?
I have no idea, I'm just kinda spitballing, because it is a steep slope, that sidewalk already, you could argue is dangerous if you would go off the side of it, and rather than debating whether or not you have to create safety, maybe just eliminate that small piece of sidewalk. I mean, I just, just putting some ideas out, because for the better long-term, with holding that side hill, maybe you eliminate that sidewalk, I don't know. You could, you could almost create some kind of a drain and gutter there, rather than the sidewalk, and maybe something that would efficiently move the water, that you, you wouldn't even need a seal, you could. You wouldn't have a seam when you ported or something, maybe create that. And still do.
Can I bring the sidewalk to the street then?
I, I mean, I don't know, I'm just kinda saying, that's.
There's a sidewalk that looks around the courthouse.
Right, I'm just wondering if that's, maintaining that sidewalk makes this project harder than it has to be, and the likelihood of it succeeding long-term less, because. Do we really need that sidewalk, if that's the case, rather than the structure of the hill, you know, that's just a question on it.
There isn't a sidewalk on the other side of the street, so people that do come from that into town, they wanna walk up to the, walk bathroom.
That's the reason why eliminating is probably the greatest idea, but just for the sake of the project's success, if it would be better to eliminate the sidewalk, I don't know. I mean, if you as a contractor, you don't feel like keeping, maintaining the sidewalk, there's gonna be huge impediments to the job, or?
I think keep the sidewalk there, because you need something to keep that, the next level, through there too, you know, so, right, you take the sidewalk out, and. With the safe, there's some rocks there, they're washing down, pretty soon, uh, the next level of that hill is starting to wash out. Because I mentioned to Virg one day about spraying it, probably, he said, oh no, we don't wanna do that, so that kills off the vegetation that holds them up.
Yeah, if you get the, high hill going, it's gonna be.
Yes, well, we're trying to prevent anymore from rebuilding the way, because what I said, the further this gets into the hill, the worse it becomes. So, and that's where we thought that the cement and the border would be the best and the most efficient, but we know it's gonna be a lot of labor and work, and, and we have to do that. Uh, taking out the sidewalk, I think would be, mistake myself, because there's really nothing wrong with the sidewalk, the sidewalk's actually really good, it's. The flow of water that comes down this hill, and maybe we could even, like I said, take that sidewalk up on top here and channel towards the, the street, so. Enjoy that water from the park, and that gets to the street before it hits that sidewalk.
I, I, my point was eliminating the sidewalks to create some kind of a drain.
Great.
We need make it grass, and we need to concrete it and create a better drain than just the sidewalk, but I understand that sidewalk probably gets used pretty heavy, so taking out the sidewalk, that's the deal. Just something, so. For the sake of schedule here, I guess we'll have to move on, so is there?
Probably a motion to go ahead and split the costs with the city. To do the repair on that whole one.
So a motion by Commissioner Hall to split the cost, is the same, fifty fifty, fifty percent?
Fifty fifty.
Fifty, fifty percent of the cost. Estimated cost to be twenty-five thousand dollars. That sound fair to you?
Yeah.
Okay, there's seconds to that motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Michael. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I want them to make sure that you check with NDU on what their plan is, as part of that. I think that's crucial.
They're trying, trying to figure it out. Yeah, because I don't, I didn't know if they were gonna think of boring anything either. No, we just, we just visited a little bit.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to talk to.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we just talked about another option, that, you know, try to find the best option, achieve this option, the best option.
But the situation where also moving the poles, isn't that viable, maybe just going underground would be better than trying, you know, mess with something else, but that, that's a long shot.
What you can do to this, I mean, there is a different option than this, I mean, you could backfill the whole thing, or, that was, let's, we buy angle?
Eliminating the sidewalk, you're talking.
Yeah, eliminating the sidewalk and all of it.
Well, like Chris, like eliminating the sidewalk, you're gonna take away that foundation for the top tier there, you know what I mean? And that's, that's what, that would be based on what a rock is, that's packed nice, that's everything set nice, it's the downside that's washing away, and that's where. People were trying, I don't know who exactly, trying to fill the concrete building, because it was washing out, uh, the length lives of that sidewalk. Well, the follow path was three, distance by the pole, and ever since then, it's been, it's been a hill by that pole. My fear was that the pole would actually go, follow, follow lines on here, but. Well, that's, like I said, the main thing is you gotta get the silicone on the top side, and get that water out there as fast. It's gonna run down the length of that sidewalk yet, regardless, because it's going downhill this way also, but if we can get it to dive off right away, I think we're gonna be. Not looking at as potential hazards where we are now.
They tried to eliminate the.
You can't see on the pictures here, but they tried to fix it, and there's about a cement slab, but a sidewalk and the grass on the top. But this one, yeah, but they tried to fix it years ago, so there have been issues, and they did put that, well, that's, it's come to the end of that now. Like I say, you're putting a band-aid on it, and it'll pay for a while, but it's just come to the point where we need to do something else.
Yeah, so steer the discussion back on, so we can stay, the safe plan, I think, works, we have a motion on the floor to approve to split the cost of city-lit, fifty percent, fifty percent. Estimated cost of about twenty-five thousand dollars to be safe, um, I said, the only thing to request is that we might appropriate it from the ARCA. Really have a budget line, I don't probably can handle that, so, does everybody, does seem reasonable to the sake of discussion? Okay. On that, we'll call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yeah.
Commissioner Everly?
Yes.
Commissioner Culver?
Yes.
And a yes vote as well. Okay. I would say move forward with the process and keep us on the date. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, you guys.
Yep. Sheriff Sanders? Littleton Honey, what you all on?
Good morning, I wanted to speak to the commission about the nine-one-one budget, so, before everything was kinda set and, and settled for the week. And you all know my office, DAP team, I'm retiring at the end of this month, and one of the things that, well, she was compensated a few hundred dollars a month in my budget. Or her duties, the bookkeeping part of that. I approached Josh Oden here, who's our GIS coordinator, if, what's that?
Oden.
Oden, excuse me, yeah. And, uh, to maintain the nine-one-one mapping system, which basically is a GIS map, okay? One of the problems that I'm running into is finding the time to continue to maintain that with Cactell, Beaver Bay. The new subdivisions, the Richter subdivisions going, and we've got some housing that's going, that is kind of off the grid, and maintaining those roadways and things like that. Um, and I talked to Josh, if, if he would be wanting to take on the duties to maintain that mapping system along with the GIS duties, and he said he would. So what I'm looking to do is allocate that two hundred dollars a month that we've previously been paying, to allocate that towards Josh for those duties.
And the thing would be good, because actually, our nine-one-one road map is slightly different than DOT's road map, and that's what I use. So, I see the nine-one-one, and I see discrepancies, so if I have access to both, I can face not only DOTs, and that they give me, they'll make things harder. And most GIS guys do some part of the nine-one-one addressing. Sometimes I have two, three GIS guys, they do the whole thing.
So you have, you have all signed up for nine-one-one, or?
Well, that's, what the road department kinda takes care of that, part of the signage part of it, uh, when they do their signage, and again, the, the, the signage, that signage that the county road department does. It's not a daily activity, they do it when they have time, or downtime, maybe during part of the, the month, so to speak, the law, you can sign it, stuff like that. Uh, but, yeah, they do that, so. Also, do the addressing, there's a lot of behind the scene work as a nine-one-one coordinator, who works state radio, with the various version of the county agencies, with the standard operating procedures, um, everything else. It's the mapping part, maintaining the roadways, like even the Richter subdivision, now, all those rules gotta be created. And really, kind of Josh's field with the GIS and doing that whole thing, that's why it would really get a lot off my plate, so that I could spend more time doing the other stuff that I needed to do. It, it's getting to be too time consuming, um, in many aspects, still got meetings to go to, quarterly, monthly meetings, um, all that stuff. So, that's what I'm looking to do, is just reallocate money that's already budgeted for. Exactly, so there's, there's nothing extra here, being asked for, it's just reallocating those funds to Josh for doing those.
The biggest thing is that you gotta find the good. Something that no one, you guys give him help for, that I, so I can talk to him, kind of, so. He changes, like, at more than his time, or on his maps, if you guys do it through that.
Well, I guess, my opinion, that probably is a better allocation of Josh's time and talent, is doing more of the GIS stuff to sheriff's department, rather than. Maybe we always share duties, that's always how it's been for them.
And this will help me get better road maps for, like, Skyler's asked too, for better road maps, that, you know, some section line DOT has mapped as an actual, you know, real ground road as well. Our max is the whole piece, and that's like a, getting squared up a lot easier. A lot of people didn't get to use the microphone, and the four forty, right, they actually.
Oh, yeah, and, and one of the biggest confusing things is a lot of people rely on moving maps, horrible when they find addresses. There is no correlation between a nine-one-one system and Google Maps. They are two completely different mapping systems, one's a private one, this one is maintained by the state of North Dakota. Now, Google Maps has indicated that they're willing to purchase the data from the state of North Dakota to make their mapping more accurate and more specific. But you probably won't see that further enough. Every year, we're pulling somebody out of the loop because their G I S, GPS map said, hey, take this corner and go straight, even though they're driving through two feet of water. As you forge ahead, they continue to forge ahead until they can't go no more, because their GPS system totally goes straight. It works great, but when you get into rural North Dakota, it's not the best system. So hopefully when data, when Google starts purchasing that data and tying those systems together, it'll be a lot more accurate. But the system and the mapping system that nine-one-one uses is based on the burka addressing system, which is a national standard. Uh, there's a reminder reason for a house number, and the same thing with section lines, having designated numbers for, you know, having to associate with. So, um, yeah, there is no correlation between those mapping systems and nine-one-one. Our CAD system is tied, uh, in the sheriff's office, our CAD system, our computers in our patrol cars, along with even the CAD system that the ambulance system uses here in town. Is all tied to the nine-one-one mapping system. So if a call for service comes in through nine-one-one, that information is pushed out through the CAD, which is computerized, computer aided dispatch. And our maps in our cars and the same thing in the ambulance is gonna show exactly where it's at and so forth. So it's not tied to Google Maps. So if those roads, and again, if those roads are not accurate in the nine-one-one mapping system, they're not gonna be accurate in the CAD system. Because that information is pushed to the CAD every once in a while, right? So it's important to keep those roads accurate, uh, I've done some added in here recently, um, but again, it's getting to the point with those subdivisions, especially along Lake Owah, he is the biggest part. Get those in order, uh, and that development continues up there, that's not gonna stop. It's, it's, it's gonna continue, so.
Do you have something to add?
Well, it's not to do more with the nine-one-one, but with Josh, where he stated about getting help for Denise. As you know, next year, the, the state's going to the legislature to have the clerk of courts make state employees. Well, that would split out the clerk of court and county recorder. So the county recorder would be on her own. And you run into a problem when she goes convention, she takes vacation. This way, the gal that would be hired for Denise could be cross-trained as a, on the recorder's side. And she could fill in then when the recorder would be gone. So just be, be another use for, if you would hire somebody to help Denise, she could also be cross-trained for the recorder's side. If it goes through that they get split.
Nice work, we can save the discussion for the preliminary budget talk. Thanks, so.
Yeah, I guess that's all I have right now, I'm like, so I'm not looking to add anything, to reallocate things, to, to Josh. You know, to have a start on that project. And that could actually start, uh, in early, in March.
That's okay with you, Dr.?
Yeah.
Sorry to hear any of those, that's.
Yeah, a late time thing.
All right, well, like, anybody have more discussion on that subject? If not, I'd say we're forward with that transition, so. Take a couple minutes break here, if anybody can see the rest of the, there's coffee, water, anything. Oh, okay. Listen. Here, we can all come up with you then. Who fish is that? No, I, it's something I've been.
From those high school days.
Yeah.
You can't say it's a lot, you know, because. That is the dream, you know, the.
Me too.
You're out of power. Oh, you're out too. Transformer replaces.
Yeah, six o'clock.
Yesterday, we were showing this off. We're showing this off, we should have happened by two o'clock, but I believe, I said I believe. We got last night's house. Yours. Yeah. I've been nothing on it, so. We went after it yesterday now, we turned it to check the clock, I think it was about hour and forty minutes, we had both sides falling down.
Yeah, yes.
I wasn't worried about.
Yeah, I mean, the university version was, was, was. Was he conditioned out as much as I could give out sometimes? Soon we did a house area last week, three story house.
It's taken them no.
A wild, wild venture, and carried all the sheen of the whole ladder.
The last one.
I mean, you're already on the.
But there was no access to the backyard in this one, and I carried all the sheens of all those sheens down the ground, and it's great to hold on those two.
We'll call this meeting back to, back to order, I guess.
I just want you to note that, um, Gary didn't include the two hundred dollars in his twenty twenty-three budget, so I'll have to be adding that. Twenty-four hundred for Josh and into the general fund, I mean, the nine-one-one general in twenty twenty-three.
This is gonna move from another fund to another one, right?
Well, no, we were, the nine-one-one was not supporting the salaries anymore, it was coming out of the nine-one-one general, out of the general fund. So I'm gonna have to, I'll increase it another twenty-four hundred dollars then, okay? I'll make me a note to do that here, because he did not include it in the twenty-three budget. At twenty-four hundred. Right, he didn't want the new person to get it, so he didn't put it in his budget. What do you mean? When Gary did his twenty twenty-three budget, he did not include, because he said that the new person.
Have it on.
He said the new person was gonna be, that's gonna be included in her salary for doing Gina's job, so.
I thought you could have.
He did have to, it was on and they took it out, yeah. So I'll have to be putting that in, I just want to be known of that. Okay, um, just some urgent notes that I typed up for you guys to follow along with me if you want. Um, we're still working on the tax evaluation process, um, Denise is still making some small changes to the real estate until this Friday. Um, the central assessed values were sent to us from the tax commissioner's office last week. With all the information that I've received so far, I'm estimating the taxable valuation per county to be that forty-one million, four hundred and one thousand nine hundred and fifty. And then road, unorganized road district, that thirty-six, I mean, I have to use something to go ahead with these estimated tax statements, so, um, that's, that's only the estimate so far. Okay, and then within the general fund, if you'll notice the first pages here, I've got the mill levies broken down in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Um, the general fund needed, the mill levy needed for the general fund budget will be forty-one point zero eight mills, which is up six point five mills from last year. Um, the expenditures have increased over the past three years. We were able to keep the mill levies down the past few years by using the CARES Act funding, that was three hundred and some thousand that we got from CARES Act funding. And that was given to the counties by the state with the intention that we provide property tax relief by keeping the general fund mill levies down, which we did. Um, the increase in expenditures overall, is overall departmental budgets increasing? And we've also started utilizing the general fund for additional expenditures related to the shortfall in the nine-one-one budget. We've added a nine-one-one general line item to the general fund, which added an additional expenditure of forty-five thousand dollars to the general fund, which we never had before. Um, and then in addition to adding a nine-one-one general line item, we also have to transfer seventeen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars this year into the nine-one-one budget. And then in twenty twenty-three, we're gonna have to transfer in another nineteen thousand seven hundred and one dollars. And that's to help support the increased state radio fees that Gary's been talking about. Also, in the general fund, we've included the Emmett County Food Pantry, which is originally funded by the Human Services. And then other new line items was the siren for seventy-eight thousand dollars last year. Um, additional technology costs for a new security system and other increased costs for the county server and just I T costs overall. We've also added an H R consultant, which is funded by the general fund, so that's the reason why we're gonna have to go up for six point five one mills. Our expenditures were increasing, we've had the CARES Act money to support those expenditures, now we don't have that CARES Act money anymore. So we gotta make up that lost revenue by using mill levies. Okay? So, if you guys wanna go through the whole thing, we can. Um, page one is the appropriation and cash reserve for the general fund, that just shows, um, how I came up with how much we gotta levy. That's about one, one million seven hundred and one thousand with an appropriation of two million nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. That's following along? So the first five pages is basically just the general fund. And then the other, um, funds that need some attention is that county road and bridge fund. I moved the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars gravel that we have budgeted for in county road and bridge, I moved that to the House Bill fifteen oh five fund. That's that seven hundred and some thousand dollars we received from the legislators here in January. Um, I talked to Brian Fuchs at the auditors conference a couple weeks ago, and I asked what we can actually use that funding for, and he said, we can use it as we please, it's just so it's for roads and bridges. And we don't need any prior approval to spend it from the D O T. So I put it in the budget to balance the road funds out, I put it in as an expenditure in the House Bill fifteen oh five. By doing that, um, the levy for the county road and bridge, I proposed in a seven point nine eight. Last year, we did a six point nine nine, so that's up one mill also. One mill, my estimate is forty-one thousand four hundred and one dollars and ninety-five cents. And then highway tax, you'll notice on page six, that's highlighted in yellow. Um, this has always been the problem with highway taxes, we only receive, we've been receiving only four hundred and some thousand dollars a year from the state. Uh, we did receive some miscellaneous revenue, where they, um, in twenty twenty-one and then some in twenty twenty-two, where the legislators gave us so much per township. I stuck some of that money into highway tax. Also, we had some FEMA and flood disaster money, I put some of that in highway tax also. And then I was also short, where I had to transfer another hundred thousand dollars from the permit fund into highway tax. And this is strictly used to pay the road department salaries. So if we budget the way John turned in a budget for eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, that was high in its condition on health. Um, so temporary help. Um, if we appropriate the eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, we're gonna be in the red at the end of twenty twenty-three of that two hundred and sixty-three thousand. And they are increasing our highway tax, um, they told us we're gonna get five hundred and forty-five thousand next year, that's what the state's projecting. But, um, that, that revenue was all figured, recorded in twenty-three, but that revenue's all figured in here, we're still gonna be short that two hundred and sixty-three thousand. So this is why when you guys say we need to hire some more people, I kinda look at you like, I don't think so, but I mean, you know, I don't know. How else to pay for it? It is a problem, I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, and the next one is road district, um, that one there, I moved the three hundred thousand dollar gravel that we have budgeted for into the House Bill fifteen oh five also. And then we can levy the eighteen mills, which will have enough to appropriate, I'm moving that three hundred thousand out. I can balance the budget by bringing in those eighteen mills, and that's what we get levy last year, so we're okay there.
We're really just, we're trying to make a long story short, the biggest increase is gonna just be to the general fund.
Right.
What's like really nine point two three percent of the thirteen percent proposed increase is coming from the general fund.
And then, well, also weed control went up, water went up, water resource went up, um.
Right, but I'm just saying, I mean, a lot of those only went up about a half a percent, but then the general fund went up nine point two three, so the general fund is, I mean, if you're gonna concentrate any efforts to try and.
And then the capital projects also went up a little bit, because of some of the jail costs. That Gary had put in his budget a little bit more, I think there was some capital improvement or something in there too, with some prisoner costs, I'm gonna have to raise that mill again. Mill levy up to also a little over a mill. Okay, and then on page sixteen, we have the permit fund, I just appropriated six hundred thousand out of there, I don't know what you guys plan on spending, but if I appropriate, at least we've got it. And the next page is E R sites, that's just basically gonna wipe itself out, and we received our last payment from D O T last week. I think when it's all done and over with, we'll probably break even on what we've spent on the Rice Lake Road. So that will be a wash. And then on page eighteen, I got the House Bill fifteen oh five, that's a revenue that received in twenty, beginning of twenty-two here of seven hundred and forty thousand. I appropriated the five hundred and twenty thousand dollars of gravel out of there for next year. We have these two contracts with Roll Ball and with, um, Campbell. So our, about five hundred and twenty thousand is what I had figured was going out of there. So there's another two hundred and some thousand that you guys can spend, if you, if you can think of a project you wanna do or something like that, that will just leave it sitting in there and move it for whatever. And then page nineteen is the Prairie Dog Bill. Um, I was told by the state treasurer, who was at the auditors conference, and he said that the Prairie Dog Bill was promising for the counties. Um, he can't, gave a handout to everybody in Emmett County, showed that one point two million. Now, I just found out yesterday that it's only gonna be one point one million from the Great Plains study that they did, it's only gonna be one point one million. And this is only if the buckets fill up, and what they're projecting, if the oil stays up like it is, the buckets will fill up, and then it'll roll down into the counties, and we should get one point one million. So I have changes. No, that's not a mill, no.
No, what I'm just saying is, you know, this thirteen percent, anything's a Prairie Dog Bill.
No. I didn't, I didn't, um, figure any, transferring any of this money whatever into another fund.
Fund basically in case of this.
So that we can spend it if we need to, um, because I don't even know what we can spend it on, you know? I don't know what the stipulations are, so, when, if, if it does fall through, we get that money, I'm sure the engineers will be around to do a project or something. Okay, and the next one is just some state revenue that we get, and I transferred it into other funds, and we use it to support like the library and pay the elevator out of there, and the lit fire department, straw supply department. and the litfire department, straw supply department. And then the next one is the emergency fund. I lowered that levy a little bit. I went from, we had four last time, I went down to three point four eight. I'm always a little wary about dropping it any further, because as soon as we do that, then we end up with a case no events. And then we, we use this emergency fund to declare emergencies to pay for like overtime with the road department or any kind of fund, any kind of emergency in the county we can use it for. Then the auditorium, I just appropriate so much to, when we bring in some revenue, where we rent that auditorium, it hasn't been rented out that much. And then if there's a few, like if Craig would ever want to buy a new coffee pot or a new roaster or whatever, we can use this money to purchase that. And the next one is nine-one-one. Like I said, I'm going to have to transfer in from the general fund this year and next year to help support those higher radio fees. And then on page twenty-four, state grants, sometimes the sheriff's office or even like Anita with her grant, is we have a grant in and we have a grant out. So we use this fund for that. And then Litton Police Contract, that's what Litton City gives us the ten thousand dollars a year for equipment for the Litton Police Department. And then capital projects, that's the, for the jail. And then I also appropriated the courthouse, another fifty thousand, and then the road department, another forty thousand to do some improvements. John's been using that, that fund quite, quite a bit for some road department projects. The Sheriff twenty-four seven program, that's, I believe that's for practice and stuff like that when people come in. So that's pretty much in and out. Hazard chemical, that's another in and out. That's one of Mary Sanders' funds. An extension has a little fund that they collect revenue from and they turn it around and spend it out. District Court Trust Fund, that's to help pay for witness fees and so on and so forth, I believe. We haven't used it for a while until last week, I think we have, we used it a couple of weeks ago. And then state medical, we have that state medical levy where we have to do one mil for the state medical center. Big game fish, that's, I collect revenue when I sell game fish licenses, turn around and give it to them or to the game fish. I don't charge any fees to do it. It is, you know, when, I know Kimball's charges to do it, but most of the people, because a lot of them go online, so the, most of the people that come in that I do this for are senior citizens that don't use a computer, don't have your children around here. I feel they already pay taxes on the paper, they pay taxes to pay my wages, so I don't charge them. We don't get that many, thousand a year maybe. This next one, it, next one, it's just a domestic violence sometimes, well, this money all gets turned over to the state. We collect it and turn it over to the state. Reimburseable fund is like if we have an insurance claim and we have a thousand dollar deductible, we put the insurance money in there, turn it around and pay what the body shop or whoever. Real estate tax fund is, some people pay ahead on their property taxes, and we keep that money in there, and then once the taxes are done, we appropriate it back out. Acid forfeiture for, forfeiture for fund is, that's something that the sheriff's office uses. If they have to forfeit any guns or anything like that, they can sell them and turn around and spend the money. It only can be used in the sheriff's office. Documented preservation fund is a fund that Anita uses in her office. And then the Siren Equipment Fund, that's for that seventy-eight thousand that we took out of the general fund for some Siren equipment. And then county vehicle, I, I transferred five, I moved transfer five thousand out of the general fund into this county vehicle fund to help pay for tires, oil changes, anything that goes wrong with that county vehicle. The purchase of the gas comes out of individual department budgets, but when you need to change the windshield wiper blades or whatever, you have a fund to do that with them. And then we have the ARB. And then after that is the ambulance, the senior citizens, the historical society, the water, public health, we board, hospital and soil conservation. They all turn in their budgets except for the ambulance did not turn in their budget. I talked to the steer, so they can't go up now because I didn't get the can go up more than what they levy last year, but they did do the two mils, so that will be fine there. He's just got to get something between the two mils.
When it's all said and done, how many more mils do you have?
When it's all said and done, you look at the front page here, nine point zero seven.
Yep.
Yeah.
Almost four hundred and five.
Three hundred and ninety-seven, eight, seventy-four, twenty-seven. And you know, like the general fund is, that's a two hundred and seventy-nine thousand increase. We received over three hundred thousand from the CARES Act money, so we've been, we were doing okay, you know, until the expenses keep going up and then the revenue goes down.
Well, it's your screen.
I checked out like a two hundred thousand dollar house fee box, fifty dollars a year. I didn't check that out. I'd have to take the average, the average lay on value.
Two hundred and fifty-four.
A little twenty-five dollars quarter.
Marleus, what, what do you think is the biggest cost you're going to run in the general fund? I know the insurance increase was, was.
Well, we figured eighteen percent insurance.
You're projecting a huge insurance increase because they're projecting from fifteen to twenty percent.
I said, vote eighteen, I, I vote for Craig that it doesn't go twenty. Well, we've done it before. One year, I told everybody to put in, I took the twenty percent, and it went up twenty-two percent for ours. And then this year, I said, last time I said, put in eighteen, I think, and it only went up like less than one percent. So I don't know what it's doing.
I remember when you picked one trigger, eighteen percent, everyone was like, it didn't go up. It almost takes about an hour.
Yeah, and the higher the premiums are.
Well, you do have to remember with the general fund increase, part of those cost increases are because we are the host county from the social service zone, you know, the human service zone, which obviously adds just, I mean, every time you have any kind of employee multiplier, there's how many employees in the other social service. I mean, when the indirect costs come, I'm not saying it's huge, but like, find initial few thousand to five thousand, not just for indirect costs that we inherit by being the host county, which is, you know, probably not substantial, it's not driving this cost. We, we do to a point, I mean, there's some compensation, but eventually you have to have some investment of it.
I mean, if you're asking, like, there's some counties that, when this offer started, they would, they did pay the office extra for doing this, but we, I said, we would try it, and if we don't like it, we're going to give it up, you know?
Well, I should stay here. We get reimbursed for our indirect costs, but we don't charge anything to be the host county. Like, I mean, reimbursements are just dollar for dollar. We spend something that qualifies as indirect costs and there's money available, they have paid some of that, but that doesn't like, it's not like Marleus gets an additional cost just for being the host auditor, that would be.
And there are.
There's a lot more work.
There is a lot more work. We went from forty-some employees up to eighty-five employees. So there's always.
Here's a question.
Yeah. We have tripled the bills. We have tripled everything. But I know there are some of the host counties that didn't, the other counties did pay the host county so much more for doing it, but I said, we would try it. Nobody wanted to take it on, so I said, we would try it, if we don't like it, we'll give it up. I think we're stuck.
I don't know who else to take it, so it's probably Craig.
Because Logan McIntosh, he said no, Dicky said no, Lamar said no, Kider said no. But you've got extra paper, you've got extra time, you've got everything.
My point was, is when you talk about the indirect costs, let's just use a number and let's just say that non-reimbursable was anywhere between twenty and thirty thousand dollars. And, and some of that, we did get reimbursed money. You don't always get it, it depends on legislature funding, but that's how, you know, some years there's only a thousand dollars comes out of this county's pocket and sometimes, and I shouldn't say Emmens County especially, because it goes to the zone. But we inherit most of those costs because we're the host county, so when it's pay for issues, it's usually probably coming from us, right?
If I would tell Michelle, is she here? If I'm going to give it up, she'd probably.
I'm not saying that Craig.
You know, she likes it. She likes it that way.
Well, everything is in-house.
Being that she's the director for this area. We're bringing HR on. I'm going to tell you, that really helped because we were getting a lot of, I don't want to say problem calls, unique calls that Emmens County never dealt with before, you know? We got an employee that's on FMLA and they're only about this and this and this. How does that work for their time, for their vacation, their sick time, and things that have never happened in Emmens before that started happening, you know? And I could call Pam and. I use her a lot, especially since we took over the zone. I'm calling her at least two times a month. I, we, we have a situation I've never dealt with before, and, and you call her and, look, this is how you do it, and this is how it really does it.
Well, I think going forward, we're creating some of the, you know, job description and pay scales and some of the other things that Emmens County's not really done before, she's going to be instrumental in doing that, because otherwise it's, you know, nobody here really has that much HR experience to start developing job descriptions of, you know, that actually meet other counties and, you know, try and create some kind of, you know, continuity with other areas. So I think she's got a pretty valuable position there.
And then we're going to have to have our tax hearing date, and I think the centric code says it cannot be before September something, I'm going to issue a date, but is it okay if we do it at the October meeting, October fourth? And then I want to know what time you guys. What time, where you guys wanted to go at six o'clock at night, or you want to go during the day, or?
Say at least in the afternoon. If we have a, I would say if I want to have it later in the day.
Because I have to put it on our tax statements that we have to send out here in a few weeks. So what time do you guys want to hold it?
I think we usually have it at like, do we have at least? Six o'clock. I'd say we should have it at after traditional work days, at least after five. You know, I'd say people can attend or try and make it easier for people.
You want to just shoot for five o'clock then?
I'd say at least five thirty.
Five thirty?
Yeah.
I'd say five thirty.
Five thirty. Yeah. Any earlier than that, it gets tough for people to get off work and they get here. I hate when I get over the rate of the evening, so. I would say five for, for five thirty. I'd say that would be.
Any questions you guys have? And I did go through them. Sorry, we have to have a mil increase?
We don't have to have.
I don't like doing it.
Well, I know everything's going on. That's difficult. Well, I guess the main thing is to look it over in the meantime. I would say we could still cut the math.
You have, you can cut into January, you can cut in October. You can't raise anything after the estimate tax statements are sent out, you cannot raise it.
We have to approve before I'm in the budget. We don't have to approve that.
And what I'll try to do is that twenty-four hundred for the nine-one-one, so I don't have to increase it anymore. I'll find a place, me back and find a place in my, part of my budget, probably utilities or something, I'll lower just a little bit, so we don't have to go up that twenty-four hundred. I'll throw that with something else. For Josh, I'll do anything for Josh.
You'll make, you'll make Krugan? I love Krugan, I love Krugan. Well, I guess the good thing is make it a preliminary budget in the meantime and figure out alternatives, whatever those ones are. I'm not raising anymore after today, so if there's anyone wants to raise something, it's.
Last couple of years, we haven't raised.
Last three years we haven't raised, or even four years. Not in the general fund. We've been so lucky with extra revenues coming in that we didn't have to raise. But, but you know, when those legislators gave us that money? I mean, I, I can come, I can come out and say, well, we should have raised a mil here last year and a mil the year before, but when those legislators gave us that money for that CARES Act, they said, we want you counties to use it for property tax relief, lower your millets into the general fund, and that's what we did. But you know, we're utilizing that general fund for a lot more. We never had Pam before. We never had that Siren before, and we never had the fees go up so high on nine-one-one. I mean, we heard Gary, the last two meetings, talk about that just.
One question I do have, that was a little bit of a, maybe either communication error or just the, you know, we were in, you know, when, so when, when Pam came up with her salary comparison, you know, when, when cheap we had, which, you know, where people stood, when we were talking about budgeting and what Josh had requested it is budget versus what we had assessed when we were looking at, you know, trying to match the salaries later on in the afternoon, I think we kind of went with two different numbers. What we, what we went with at the end of the meeting didn't correlate to what Josh was requesting in his budget, which we kind of said was okay. So what number did we go with?
Yeah, I don't even know.
In the budget.
Yeah, you went with ten percent. I requested a twenty percent on the basis that, you know, with this survey, the lowest paid GIS person's sixty grand. You know, with a twenty percent, that would put me at thirty-nine grand. If I was full-time, it'd be like forty-eight grand, so still well below, but after talking about these mils, you know, I don't ask for more than that. So yeah, that's all there is, your question. I am getting happy for everything that's been said.
Well, I guess just bringing it up because we can't raise these budgets anymore, like I want to make sure we have the right number in, because I know there is just some confusion of what Josh was requesting versus what we had decided to put in the budget in the afternoon, right? Well, that was two different numbers, and I want to make sure that we are going with whatever number is the number we all want, not realizing that we kind of said, yeah, your budget looks good, and then later on, kind of proposing a different way. I, I guess I'll advocate the one thing about it is Josh has taken on a lot of extra duties, you know, just building inspection, stuff he's taken on, which is going to be to, you know, his running the computer during the meetings, bringing these maps up. He tackled this camera project. I mean, I offered some assistance, but I probably put it, Josh probably did about eighty to eighty-five percent of it, and I just provided some kind of stuff when he had questions or just asked me what I thought, but I mean, he tackled it and he took it on. And, you know, he's always taken on responsibilities, whether it was with, you know, the tax assessor's department, he's taken on the nine-one-one related duties, his election health, all that stuff. So as far as, you know, what he's requesting for pay, I think an increase is absolutely in order, and depending on where he wants to be, I mean, he's done a great job, so. I guess I'm more in favor probably of offering what he had originally budgeted for, since the reason he is so, called underpaid is the fact that he was not doing near the duties he's doing now. I mean, originally, when he came on, he was working what, three days or? Right. You know, so his salaries never really correlated with him adding the extra days and the extra time.
Well, what really happened looking back, Sarah tried putting the GIS under her department, switching from coordinator to technician and lowered it to like twenty-five percent to what Nathan was doing. So I'm at four years here, and someone had made it, Nathan left naked, just because they tried applying it under Sarah with one of her employees, lowering the pay, I was a technician. Although we kind of set that straight, but not the pay, but that's why I'm asking for
So it looks like we actually went with a lower wonder in the preliminary budget, because what's requested for two thousand and twenty-three is forty-nine thousand, six and a half in the location, this is on page four. So what was requested of the GIS coordinator budget?
But that's his whole budget though, that's not just his salaries.
Right, but I guess I'm just looking at the, I mean, grand total for Josh's original proposal is fifty-three, thirty-six, so I wanted to find one.
So what, at the ten percent, he was going to get thirty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and eight cents, and then he gets paid the billing inspector of three thousand, forty-one, fifty-five.
Yeah, and that's just an overestimate. Yeah, and that's just an overestimate, I do, but a day or less than a day, a month on that.
But it would have been thirty-five thousand one hundred and forty-two eighty with a ten. Um, just his whole budget.
Right, but you don't have a warranty for this?
No. It would just be his total.
It looks like a bigger increase from twenty twenty-two, or sorry, from twenty twenty-one there because it was approved at three days a week from me and we added fourth day after that, so that wasn't included in last year's budget. So that looks like it's a bigger increase.
So when I was looking at his public, you're paying this, what do you increase?
For his salary?
Yeah.
For a ten percent, thirty-five thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty cents. So what you're looking at is his entire, his travel and everything on there.
No, that's the ten percent. I'll grab one, if you guys wanna talk about something else.
Well, yeah, we have to land a thirty, because we're probably, so I can just keep going, but it's, that was one thing I just recognized after the last meeting that we had proposed two different numbers, so we just made sure we had it clarified. Not that we decided later that we wanted to go with a bigger number and we already approved the preliminary budget, you know, whatever.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, correct.
Chief, that assessment that Pam made up. Um, if you look on there, it does not list the county reporter anywhere. So on there, I'm only getting credit for being the clerk recorder. And same with my deputies, they do work on both sides, they're only listed as the deputy clerk and deputy recorder. They're not listed as deputy clerk and recorder. They're cross-trained, they do both offices. And that doesn't reflect it on there either. Let me look by Marlo, she's auditor of financial and her deputies are auditor of financial. Well, my girls are not, and I talked to Pam and she did not realize that I was also becoming recorder. On the NDA CO, on salary survey, it does have the money. Well, she didn't, she, maybe she didn't know I was. That's what she looked at, I mean, like the auditor of finance, that's one out. The auditor of finance is one out. Well, when I talked to her, she didn't, she said, I didn't know that, she said, because most of them are not combined. And I know when I sent her stuff, I sent it to her and I put clerk recorder, you could call and talk to her. See, you know, maybe she has another suggestion for her or something, I don't know. She was gonna try to come up with an, uh, I might one, but she didn't know she had one. A new one. Can you just add one of that?
So with the ten percent that you guys approved, it was in that thirty-five thousand? But the twenty percent that I request is gonna be thirty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-four, which is the salary.
Right, so I mean, that's what I was getting at, so in the preliminary budget, Josh's total budget is forty-nine thousand six ten. His proposed budget was fifty-three, eighty-sixty-six.
Correct.
So the preliminary budget, I mean, assuming most of that just reflects the difference of pay. And then probably the.
And then increases everything else.
So it's about a four thousand dollar difference.
Well, yeah, but he's got travel, he's got opposite sides.
Right, but that's already in this budget.
Right, in there, yeah.
I'm saying the difference between the forty-nine and the fifty-three is that his preliminary budget or his original budget he submitted was fifty-three, eighty-sixty-six. That was with his, with the twenty percent increase.
Right.
Well, like you said, it probably increases the fight number retirement, you know, but so that's where the difference is roughly four, thirty-eight hundred dollars. And that's what I'm saying, when it was in the preliminary budget, we're not actually, we're not including in the preliminary budget the budget he requested. So that's what I'm saying is, do we wanna put in the preliminary budget being increased for about thirty-eight hundred dollars? And that's just basically because the original budget that he submitted versus what we set for, are we sticking to the pay increase we made towards the end of the meeting when we were talking about salaries or are we sticking to his budget? That's what I'm, that's the question. And I guess my suggestion is I would just stick with his budget on that because I feel like that probably more adequately reflects the duties he's taking on. So that's my opinion, it's just how we need to crack before we go with this preliminary budget, so once Marlo sends up his estimates, we cannot change it. That's one of the, that's just one of the. Well, yeah, evil logic, can't go up, so.
So would you want him to make them?
Well, I think we'll stick to his original budget proposal, so that would be thirty-eight thousand three forty-four. And I guess if the budget is that much out of proportion, I guess we propose, but we consider, I think we should include in the preliminary budget if you're considering. Right, if you're not considering that rate increase, then do it now, or if you're still considering and you think so, we should include that original proposal, so. So I think we should make that change to Josh's budget. And then other than that, I don't know if there's any other concerns? Questions? Okay, I think that ends the preliminary budget discussion. About eleven fifteen, we're actually a little ahead of schedule, so if we wanna bring on, if we bring on Joey with Summit and I guess anybody else attending.
Joey Barachi, Turnkey Logistics, representing Summit Carbon Solutions. Just need to follow up on some questions from the last time I was here. Make sure I have this right, cause I want to start to submit some from that. Last time I was here, we were talking about the pump station being built in two different phases, select the electric coming in, fencing, so forth, and then they would come back later and build the, you know, the pump station itself. If I remember correctly, there was a conditional use permit for that. But since we're doing it in two different phases, that we would need, remember it's permit for the phase one and then permit for phase two. So that is.
I would say that would probably reflect what we've done in the past, like with alcohol, we had two phases, so we had two permits.
Okay. This here, it looks like conditional use ordinance is required for electric transmission facilities and for gas pipelines and other pipelines. So I'm assuming for like a, a main line valve, if there's any electric, trust me, it needs to go up to it, that would require another conditional use. It would be electric?
I don't, I think when the, I guess just speaking for myself, when the electrical transmission property considers like an entire transmission line, not like an individual component of the project, I would say. Cause I don't think we did individual conditional use permits for every, we basically did one for like, let's just say that was, it was the entire project. Was encompassed in a conditional use permit, whether that was an electrical component or mechanical component, it was all basically approved as one. I would say, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
And then when they did the pumping station, they would do it.
Right, but they're probably using electrical transmission like an entire transmission line, not just like a component of a project.
Okay.
If it's all done in the same phase, it's a reasonable.
Understood, understood. Okay, I know you told me who this was last time, but the director of tax legalization is?
The NACO.
Okay, regarding casing, you guys had a chance to review or discuss or, the casing up under the roads?
I guess my opinion on it, I mean, seems pretty common in other projects, obviously not the same scale and the casing, especially under your major roads is usually done, usually with like some kind of steel casing and stuff. I mean, just going off my limited knowledge on it, that seemed like I was already the proper way to go, but. I suppose we probably have to have our own engineer conscious consultation if we're gonna do the difference.
In regards to this carbon solutions, I'm, I'm sitting here with letter after letter after letter of conservative citizens and landowners and such that really don't have an interest in this project purely, that's just plain simple, they don't really give a damn about this project. I don't know that we're wasting Joe's time, our time. Cause I haven't had anybody walk in this story that's said to me in their favor, that they're just all up in the air and wanna see this thing go. And I think we're just blowing smoke here and wasting time if people don't want this. I'm standing behind the people and telling them that we're not gonna do this. So, you know, and, I mean, I just don't wanna waste your time or ours, if this thing is gonna be just dragged on and dragged on and we're just gonna sit here, not, I mean, I'm, last time you were here, you know, we kind of just let you lose your opinions and get the ball rolling, because that's what we do. But since then, I've gotten a pool of letters from everybody in here and others. And I just think that the majority of people don't wanna see this happening and they have good reason for that. So, um, I don't know that we're, unless I'm wrong, that the county's standing behind this thing a hundred percent. I think it's time to move on. I'll be correct me if I'm wrong.
I guess my, my biggest question is the proper course of action, you know, with, you know, I can tell you, I've probably received the same emails and letters, I would even more, so, you know, I don't, I don't know if the county is in the situation to deny a permit that hasn't been applied for, but I don't really know the, the avenue to approach it, I think, I think the main concern is eminent domain more than anything. And I think there's enough concern about the eminent domain to merit a lot of discussion and probably even some extra requirements of this project more than we've made on others probably, even that just because of the, the amount of participation versus previous projects. And I think as a county, we adopted the resolution that we impose eminent domain and I think we need to stand behind that as well. I don't know the proper avenue to go about all of it, but I do, I do agree with one thing, it's, it's tough to discuss some of these parts of the project when the bigger elephant in the room is whether or not this project even didn't exist too. But you also have to address these issues in order to create a project, does that make sense? I mean, you can't, it's hard to say whether or not you're gonna approve or deny a project without knowing all the parameters of it as well, so that's what's tough.
Well, then let's go at it from a different angle. You're out there trying to acquire easements, I assume, yes, what percentage of the easements have you acquired? Are we at two percent, ten percent, forty percent?
To have a project of day, that's, well, two day, but the last time I was here, uh, county, we had drive it twelve miles, which is thirty-two point four nine percent within, uh, north, or, the Emmens County. I'm sure that number is higher because that's been, well, your month ago, I guess, something like that, so I'm sure that number's higher.
You know, you talk with thirty-nine percent of easement approval? Is that, is that what I'm gonna say, you have thirty-nine percent roughly?
Yeah, not, not, thirty-two and a half percent.
But of that thirty-nine percent, there isn't one person in here. There's no one person standing here saying, you know, guys, this is a good deal, you're missing out. That, that doesn't tell me much. You know? So, and I agree with Aaron, there's probably a procedure we gotta follow, but just letting you know that I don't think it's anything that people in this county would.
And that's the same, I mean, we're here to serve the people and if they're requested, they're against it, you know, I don't believe that's much of an option.
Would it help if we get some of these people here that have signs to? I mean, it doesn't really sound like it, but would you wanna hear from another side?
Well, if you think there's two sides to the story, I'm gonna say there are one side right now.
Exactly.
Okay, what are your intentions of, all these people that got land here going on, going through their land? What, what would be your intention then? If you can't get from point A to point B, maybe train there?
Right now, Summit is working with all the landowners with one reason to maybe avoid the property, reroute through the property. They, they have no one, of a more of phrases wrong. Right now, eminent domain is not on their list, they are doing everything possible. As an example, just four, four months ago, they had over two thousand reroutes. We are averaging about two hundred reroutes every week trying to work with these landowners. You gotta remember Summit Carbon Solutions is a subsidiary of Summit Ag, so these are agricultural guys. They have over in Iowa and I guess other states. And they are doing their best to work with the landowners, again, with any reason.
So, so is your intention to take them up for land if you can't go across?
I do not know what they are planning, but what I can say is that that is not on their radar at this moment.
Under the example that I have, it's not on their radar, how can you guys apply for a common carrier designation with PSC? Cause I mean, you wouldn't need it if you don't, if you're not gonna pursue eminent domain, you wouldn't need the common carrier designation, I guess that's a large question.
Gotcha, I am, I'm really gonna get, that's unfortunate, I'm gonna pay for it.
Well, I, you know, for the sake of time here and the sake of how everything's going, I guess the, this part of, I guess this discussion was gonna be what I was bringing up with amending the con, conditional use permit, so for the sake of Joe's time and the help of Joe's time, that the casing is what you're mainly concerned about and then do you have any other?
The casing is, is the main thing, I think we already discussed this other stuff. Do you have a utility inspector or would that be Skylar that would go out and kind of monitor our stuff during instruction?
So typically like what happens now with the utility permit or any kind of utility easement, road superintendent, Skylar, who usually goes on the spec set, that's mainly because they cross the road right away. Some discussion that's probably gonna have likely amongst some of us is that we probably would almost have to maybe employ temporarily some kind of an inspector, whether that's hiring an engineering firm or something like that, cause I, just judging by projects in the past, it's a huge workload and probably outside the scope of experience for a road superintendent to be supervising a project like this, so. I would say at this time, if this project were to go through, we'd probably do some kind of consulting or, or maybe hire some kind of outside, someone more dedicated specifically to the project rather than have someone, you know, merge job titles and put a lot on their plate. So I'd say at this point, Skylar would be the main contact on the smaller things as far as the project itself, that's probably the term.
So, Jeremy, I have one more question.
Sure.
If I may, can I use your name and?
Sure.
Okay, you were at the last meeting.
I was, okay.
And you had asked a question about rerouting and, and, you know, cause you, you know, what do you do if they can't, if we don't give the easement rerouting? Has anyone contacted you or discussed anything since that last meeting regarding rerouting?
Uh, no, in fact, our attorney did reach out to Summit after the last letter we received and we received another letter, our attorney did yesterday, stating that they still are requiring those easements. All this.
So the rerouting option is kind of, rerouting option is kind of way back there in the deep fog of somewhere. Probably not a plan.
It's the way it seems.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because then you were at the last meeting, so.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment on that? Sure, go ahead, Ken. We had also received a letter yesterday about rerouting, but they had tried to get a hold of us and reroute and stuff. We haven't heard from anybody in two months, the last time we heard from somebody, we told them, we don't want our land, we don't care, whatever, because we're trying to put the rerouting in the house or some of the property, they don't wanna hear none of that. Their, their last comment was that we're going through it, no matter what you do. That was their comment, me personally, and now we got a letter that I was forced to hire a lawyer to fight with. I shouldn't be forced to hire a lawyer, I don't. And now we got a letter that I was forced to hire a lawyer to fight with. I shouldn't be forced to hire a lawyer. I own the properties. Why do I have to defend my own property? What happened to this property? If I was gonna go on your property and set up a camp or set up a pantry or do something, you would call the authorities and get me out of here. Why do I have to get a lawyer to defend my property that I worked my whole life off, I'm third generation? Why don't I have a same at law? When taxes come, I have so many days to pay my taxes.
I know, look, if you said that Son hasn't reached out to you other than those, those letters, but have you reached out to your land agents to let them know specifically?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. And they also said they gave me a contract. Mr. Chair, I never seen a contract. When you ask a question, they'll be, I'll get back to you. Never hear a word from them. But I'm a cornered dog, correctly meaning that.
I don't think there's no reason these people have to hire others. No, I don't know that at all.
We did.
Yeah, the bill from the lawyer came yesterday. So it's just a start. I'm afraid.
Well, if you don't mind, if I can get y'all's names, as soon as I get back to bargain, I'll shoot off an email and...
This isn't just happening in North Dakota. There's a bunch of farmers in McPherson coming in. They're probably the same thing. They're getting threatened because they're not letting the survey run. And I doubt that's where, I don't want them to come surveying out again. So to me, that's, they're refusing my rights to say no.
I think that's...
Oh, yeah, that was...
They were probably a lot down there. Nobody wants to go down that way.
Where, where's that?
That was just a false, a false.
So I mean, you guys are just wasting your time or what?
Yeah, uh, I understand and I follow John's, that these are steps that we have to go through. So, you know, getting back to you asking, you know, if we're wasting time or not, we still need to go through all the steps, get as much information as we can. So whether it goes through or not, is it a waste of time?
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt and ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Larry.
Just one question is, will all these casing locations be surveyed to the laws in North Dakota? Or as state land requirements are, will they be surveyed, located according to the laws in North Dakota?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And I, and I think we discussed this before, uh, we will be hiring some survey, certified survey company to, uh, stamp our flats. So anything that comes through will be, will meet state regulations and federal for that.
Is that your current contract survey company now?
I do not know. I don't, I don't know, but they have one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Joey, do you have any, any more part of your possession?
We, we talked about the utility inspector. What about an agricultural inspector? Make sure we're, we're in compliance, which we will be, but you know, stringent rules and regulations for stripping top soil back and, uh, stubs a little and all that.
That's all pertaining to construction of the pipeline though?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I would say probably in a similar situation, we'd probably look at bringing in someone on more of a, you know, we'll call it temporary basis, but then it'd be full time, this data be dedicated to the project. We'd probably be more, we don't have anyone specifically designated for that at this time, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to ask Joey one quick.
Yes, go ahead, Dave.
Okay, you're wanting agriculture to make sure our land is put back. Is there a booklet that actually says what you're gonna do? All we hear is, yeah, we're gonna put it back the way it was to the best of our ability. We never, cause my lawyer, obviously I got a lawyer too, said, there's nothing in the contract that says what they're gonna do. It just says our standards. Well, that doesn't tell us anything. So if you have an actual book of regulation, what you're going to do?
I'm gonna look into that and get that to the commission and get it to you, but it does say, and I'm just paraphrasing because I haven't read the contract in months. The life of better condition, somewhere along those terms, that voltage.
That's a big concern.
And remember, this is an agricultural company. That's, I, I know, but they're, they're doing way more than any oil and gas pipeline company I've ever worked for. So even though you guys don't agree with it, it's still pretty impressive what they're doing to try and, you know, be a good neighbor, I guess, is the way of putting it, but.
I guess, even, even down to that stuff up there in North Dakota, in this situation, with the permanent ground there, what's gonna happen here, is that we're gonna put that stuff in there? And how it's wired?
No, no, no. We have, there's a cap rock above and a cap rock below and in between it's row four. So it goes into that forest area and spreads out and then over...
And what are the long-term effects of that? It's down to 20 years. What's gonna happen if they wanna utilize that land from all underneath there and, and all that stuff?
The land...
Or if, or if there is a crack and it comes out someplace, even like there is that pipeline, you're only four feet deep, what's that? Or even up there, you know, what the host calls it, you know?
Yes, sir. And that's, again, that's on an individual basis with the landowner. You know, like drain tiles. We wanna have clearance. We wanna be under the head. There's future drain tiles. So there are many cases where we're going five, six feet deep.
So a landlord wanna be seven feet deep, would we do that?
I can't answer that. That means, if, I'll put it to you this way, if the drain tile is at six feet deep, we need at least one foot of clearance. So yes, we would. So it depends on each individual situation.
I think there's just so many unknowns about what that stuff to do, even when they get it up there, pump it in the ground, you know?
Well, it's gonna calcify over, I don't know how many years, decades, eventually calcify and...
And that's what they hope at.
Anything else? Joey, can you go on?
No, sir.
You're coming here?
Nope, that's it.
Oh, that, then I guess we'll move on?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So the, um, part that I was bringing up was about amending the condition of use permit. One thing that did come up, you know, during the solar moratorium, when we talked about it, was that one, our conditional use permits are incredibly cheap. The motivation behind that probably was, you know, so that it was entertaining to build here, but also the other thing too was that it's probably just never been addressed for years, so. So that was one thing I did wanna bring up. And then the other thing I did wanna bring up is, you know, pertaining to what we're talking about. You know, this eminent domain discussion has, uh, it's grown, you know, you can tell by the contacts from Summit and the way that these folks are responding to it. There's starting to be a significant group of people that most likely aren't gonna sign or are gonna find it incredibly, it's gonna be an incredible situation for them to sign. So with that being said, us as a county, we did, we did, we are on record saying that we oppose eminent domain. I think we need to stand by that as strong as we possibly can. I don't know if we can flat out deny a project that hasn't been applied for. That's, that's, I'm just being procedural on that. And so the only avenue that I can see that I know of, without doing a whole lot of research, is that we make it much more difficult to have a project like this in our county. So I would suggest amending the conditional use permit so that one of the requirements of it is you have to have 100% voluntary easements to get a conditional use permit, otherwise it's automatically denied. I don't know if that's really a problem. I don't, I have looked through enough stuff to see that, you know? I think especially in this project, I would have a hard time approving a conditional use permit, knowing that there was even one end landowner getting used for eminent domain. So if that's the stance we're gonna have on it, then it probably should just be included in the conditional use permit. So it's right out there in front. Cause I don't think there's a situation where anybody here really reasons that domain is proper and the small, small fraction of it. If, if it were a government entity, I don't believe we'd need a conditional use permit for it. So I don't think it would restrict us for a road situation, which I don't condone anyway. But the sake of it is these conditional use permits or for mostly, I mean, the majority of them of this magnitude, these big projects or these conditional use permits where the eminent domain might be used, and I don't support it, so.
You just don't need people coming in here for themselves, land that people don't want?
Well, I think that's where, us as a county, we need to send a message to the folks that are getting in this fight, that they're being supported by their local entity. And I think that, that's how we do it. I, I don't think just flat out denying something that hasn't been applied for is probably the proper way to do it and probably opens up a scenario that I don't think we wanna go down, but we can make it difficult for them to pursue this eminent domain, which is, I think, they have what we need to do, so. But I guess my suggestion is, is that we would, uh, have a motion to amend the conditional use permit. And that amendment would improve that we need 100% voluntary easements to grant a conditional use permit. And then also probably address the fee, whatever that fee. Currently, if we use, there's two conditional use permits. There's an industrial conditional use permit, which in my belief is what this route would be for this project. Then there's a regular conditional use permit, which is more for someone, you know, you know, way out some different zone, like a camper and those eventual type things, we've issued those before. That's probably more of that condition. Right, things like that, more local type, smaller conditional use permits. And then there's of course the industrial conditional permit, which is your pipelines, major transmission. $450 a year, so. You know, then, then the complication comes to what kind of a fee do you think is fair? What do you, you made the percentage of the permit? I, that, those things are very difficult. I would suggest for now, just at least making it a solid round number and something that's...
Well, and especially if you gotta hire somebody to be the inspector.
Which I think, I think getting back to what we talked about even with that is Emmens County, we've always just been like, oh, the road superintendent will look at that. That's a, that's a big job. And that's asking a lot of someone who probably doesn't have the experience or knowledge to even handle it. So looking at some kind of an outside source, an engineering firm, some kind of experts in that field or whatever, I mean, that's, it all has included costs on these projects. And we've never done that before. We've always just gone with the flow and then you find out after the project's done, there's all these mistakes. That's what I get them up into because it's not the manpower. Nobody has the knowledge. It's just, so. I guess that's the reason for bringing that to the agenda and, I guess, I don't know if anybody has anything else to add. I really don't think that, I don't, I'm sure that's probably gonna look at it. Well, the difficulty with this is I, just from my small amount of study and I am no expert, that survey is a prerequisite to applying for any kind of permit. And there are certain rules that do allow them to add, and that's what they're pursuing at this point, is my understanding, is they're pursuing the right to survey the property to basically come up with a project. And that's why even like discussing the casings and stuff, it still has to be discussed because you have to get to a certain point before you can apply for a permit. You really can't deny things till the permit's applied. And that's the reason for what, what I'm kinda getting at. Whether or not you support this project or not, there is a certain amount of procedure that kinda has to take place. So as far as where those of landowners, I don't know what we could do to stop them from accessing their land with survey. I don't, I don't know that. Because there is a small amount of, of century code that allows you to, it'd be more of a civil matter is my point. I don't think the county can officially stop them since there is a process in place. I could be corrected on that. I'm not pretending to be an expert. I'm just telling you what I've read in research. Well, like I said, there is a procedure that once the landowner's denied, there's, there's access through the courts, which is basically what some of these letters must be insinuating to. And that's where this process is going. Now, how the landowners fight that, I, I don't, I mean, they gotta get a lawyer and go to court and determine that they can't allow access? I don't know. There is, there is some stuff in century code that basically does allow at least like preliminary survey for these projects and ask access to it, so. Like I said, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a judge, so that's probably gonna get decided in court on that. So, but the county as an entity that, that approves these permits, that's where our avenue is on where we can, you know, we can make this process more difficult. We can make it to what we want it to be in our county. That's the point of the conditional use permit. It's, that's some cut and dry process that every county follows. Everybody does it a little differently, I'm sure, within accordance of the law, obviously. But if we don't support eminent domain, I don't see why we can't add that stipulation to the conditional use permit, which is probably as strong a stance as we can take at this point, so. I said, I'm open to suggestions and I'm more than happy to be corrected because I, I don't like the fact that there is nothing we can do, but the government was also created. So it's not ultimately powerful on everything. So that's where our limits lies, so. Other concerns? We're at an open forum. If somebody wants to speak up, it's fine.
Mr. Chairman.
I slowly play.
You guys are the local governing authority for Emmens County. You, you hold all the strings. You make all the decisions for these landowners that have to hire attorneys and so forth. Is there some way that you can transfer your concerns to the Public Service Commission before a corridor is approved? That you, some of the things that we've been talking about, eminent domain and so forth. And, uh, because that's a good, that's a good tool for them to have in their archives when they make a decision on corridor routes. Okay, great. Great. The other thing is, and I like the way you put it, we're trying to stay here with state laws, rules and codes. Already, if you were to put a pipeline across the state trust land or school land, there, you have to have a strip flat. It's not a blanked easement. So it's behind. Why do you need a quarter section of land to put a 20-foot pipe there? That, that kind of mentality. Uh, same thing on federal or forest service ground. But why would the private landowners have to face any other burdens? If they're, if they do happen to get permission to cross, that'd be done in a proper format, not just blanking it out. And when they do eminent domain, they may end up having to have it surveyed anyways. I mean, cause they have to come up with an acreage and so forth. And of course, it's the court system. But eminent domain is not the answer. We're here for the landowners. That's who we're trying to protect, all of us. And I just seen too much of it up in the Bakken. I, I lived out in Montana and seen it for 25 years up there. And those guys gotta run over. I mean, it's a mess up there, like you say. When they recover this sterile ground, we get out, they probably got that much topside. How do you recover that and make it viable? I mean, they, they put that word in there to the best of their ability and that's their catchall. But, and I'm not an attorney. I don't know the legal ends of those things, but those are things that we need to look at when we're talking about landowner rights.
Or to that letter, you know, would consent to the Public Service Commission that they could have that on record?
Yeah, I mean, the, I mean, the, so they, they did receive the resolution that we passed opposing eminent domain. Yes, and that was, that was the, and the Public Service Commission. And, um, and I think the letters that were, you know, with those people's permission could be submitted to the Public Service Commission on behalf of Emmens County or, and a lot of the half of themselves, landowners, I think that's fine.
I, I know that, I am a licensed servitor. I'm not looking for work. I'm retired, but...
You guys all have the same line.
But we have a lot of connections here. I do a lot of work in Emmens County and appears in, um, licensed in six states. So I have a little bit of a background on that knowledge, but, uh, I as a land servitor, I can't go out and just trespass and do surveys. If I gotta recover a section, corner, a corner, corner, I'm obligated to talk to the landowner, let him know I'm gonna be out there. He doesn't know if I'm wrestling calves or what I'm doing out there. So it's a professional responsibility. If, if there's no law, it's a professional responsibility. Montana is definitely, you do not trespass in Montana. South Dakota has the same rules that we have, similar, because they have the open section lines. The only two states in the nation that have that 33-foot right away for access along the section line. But that doesn't give us the authority to go in there. I mean, we still let landowners know what we're up to. I mean, it's, it's courtesy. And then they do it according to the rules. The ser, if the surveys are being done, that they follow the rules that are on the books already. And, uh, that's what we're here, and we will do spot checks. Larry and I, we, we got enough time on our hands. We'll go out there in a township and if they're not filing corners, they're gonna get turned into the board. And then whoever, their licensed servitor, he's gonna face, face some noise. That's, that's our, that's our only mechanism.
I mean, the only, you know, I mean, the only other step that I know of, and, and I'm not bringing any kind of expertise to it, is there's a possibility of moratorium. I mean, that would be the only thing I know of, that you could pre-permit, you know, stop a project or at least postpone it. I mean, that would be, I mean, if this court's in favor of that, I, you know, that's just, that is one of our suggestions. The only thing I know of in the toolbox is we even make it extremely difficult to get a permit. We got some water department that have accept permits, which, I mean, we did it for solar, which obviously was a different situation. So, Mr. Chairman, can we make a pre-permit?
What? If they just quit, we were in that winter project, and, uh, when you said put the leg back to where they said the same thing, it was a disaster, every time you wanted them to do something, then it's gonna come to you, you have no right, they just, you have no say no more. And the only thing I'm gonna ask you here is, you guys consider a future with these other projects? There's gonna be more of this, I mean, if it's not just my land, it's gonna be, maybe your land, is your land somebody? We gotta take a stand here somehow to make it where they know, but they can't just put their whole world, and that's what's happening. Someone's gonna take a stand, so I'm asking you guys to consider that, take a stand. But, sure.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Zeronon Langley and Morton County Commissioner, and Summit was at our meeting, um, presentation, and, uh, right into the presentation, they talked about eminent domain. We had, didn't know anything about it until it showed up. I was verbal about, I guess, eminent domain, and I went through that with a dapple. Um, the court access pipeline crossed my land, and, I mean, we were from zero. Protest started and it's a mess, so. Does eminent domain take it serious? Very serious.
Well, these people around this room, they've written the letters, they've, you know, they've taken the time to do it, so I, I suppose the the avenue is to be to amend the conditional use permit? Take no action at all and continue on as it's going, or, or third, is some other, as I said, I I use caution with moratorium, because I don't believe anything is prepared at this point. That, that's a process that if we wanna go down that road, that's fine, but that takes a little more. And even solar, when it took multiple meetings, it took, you know, even the live draft that had moratorium, I mean, it took time. I made phone calls, it's not something you just use an easier reaction, so we don't suggest that at this time. I think amending the conditional use permit is a reasonable approach that we can take, where we do the best to defend our landowners and, and send a message that we're not for eminent domain and we need it, so.
Chairman, can we give your, um, resolution that you were bringing past? Is that possible?
Meaning eminent domain or?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Fifty seconds. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, did you make a motion earlier?
I didn't.
Would you please repeat that motion?
I, I did not make.
Oh, you didn't make it?
I had a suggestion.
Oh, okay, I, I understood you making the.
My suggestion for bringing up this topic on the agenda was one, I believe our permit fee is out of order. I believe it's too low, especially on the industrial conditional use permit, which is, and these projects are tens if not hundreds of millions of dollars, and I don't feel like we're capturing some of that value. I mean, we're gonna do a project here, I don't, I think making it ridiculous is one thing, but I think making it enough that it's worth our time. I mean, we're dealing with budget increases and things like that, and our fees are way too low. I think there's up to capture some value there, trying to reduce the burden of the taxpayers whenever possible, and I think we need to amend our conditional use permit to make it extremely difficult to use eminent domain. I guess that's, that's my suggestion, and I would maintain that in the form of a motion if someone was so willing. Yeah, I'm sure.
What's your motion?
Well, you gotta, you can't just say a word for it, I'm just giving a suggestion, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to try something.
Well, it didn't work, no.
I don't know what's going on, I mean, is there any other ideas, I guess? Like I said, make a fee like the higher, you know?
Oh, there's conflict, I mean, that's me.
Well, the fee, you can come up with a percentage of, but the total price, go through it or something, you know? Instead of, uh, or an outward, or you can say ten percent of what the total cost for the project or something, yeah?
I would be there.
Although they should know.
Well, I would, I would say, I would say when they're gonna apply for the permit, there has to be an estimated value of the project. I could say that ten percent's maybe the most.
Well, I did, I just threw it out, yeah. I just threw it, I just threw it.
Like, you wanna stop a project, that might do it. I, I, you know, I, I mean, I just, I mean, that's just, give you an example of two hundred thousand, a two hundred million dollar project. One percent of that is, oh, my God, that's twenty thousand dollars, right? I mean, that's probably, I mean, it's probably more than, I'm at four hundred and fifty dollars. Wait, 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 you're gonna take the whole cost, right? You're gonna take the whole, but you gotta remember, the permit fee is not with the intent of starting or stopping a project, it's to capture the value for what you're probably, your document fees, worker, you know, and that's what, I'm just saying, like, I mean, if your goal is to stop a project, then just put your fee at ten million dollars and then deliver the project. I mean, that's seriously, that's your goal to stop a project, that's what your goal is. If your goal is to just capture value on these projects at the beginning, so that way we can cover our own costs to monitor the project, then you have to make it some kind of a reasonable fee. I would say somewhere in the, you know, a, a percentage of the project makes the most sense, 'cause as the project gets bigger, you scale up your fee, which obviously means you're probably gonna have more work, whether that's recordings, a- all the different courthouse type fees, and then if there's any regulation outside the courthouse, like monitoring the project, so I would say, you know, I mean, and we probably don't have to totally just make that decision now. I mean, it doesn't have to totally be made now, I guess, I mean, if you have a number, it's fine.
Yeah, we can just say we're gonna go by percentage, but we can come up with it later.
Right, I mean, I don't wanna just, but I think it needs to get addressed, but I think one thing we should respond to now is I think we're all in agreement that we're not in favor of eminent domain, and that's where the suggestion is making a hundred percent voluntary easements as a part of the conditional use permit, I think is something we should have to update, so. So, you wanna amend the conditional use permit to include a hundred percent voluntary easements, so.
Amend the me, conditional use permit for what?
The industrial conditional use permit. Well, I just wanna specify that, because there are two hundred percent.
Okay.
Would you please read that motion back?
Well, I just got to amend the condition, the industrial condition use permit to make it a hundred percent voluntary easement from landowners?
And the same with pipeline or? I think we're just gonna make any project, I don't think another project coming through would, would get the same treatment, so.
For all projects?
I, well, I don't think you wanna name a specific project, I just, because that's, that's not very popular, I think our belief is. Whatever motion you want, it just might not get voted for.
You wanna do a motion on that one? Research other counties, so, um, they're doing their fees.
Right, right, right.
I don't know that other counties are faced with these situations as much as Emmens County is.
Not much.
Down the road, it's for the. Yeah, down the road, but I'm talking local county.
Well, I'd say we have a motion on the floor to amend the conditional use permit, but we wanna make another motion to vote on the team. Can you, if you have a motion on the floors, or a second to that motion? Seconded by Commissioner White. Any more discussion? The motion is to amend the industrial conditional use permit to include that requires a hundred percent voluntary easement from landowners. So, any more discussion? Not hearing any, the rule calls over. Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Home?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Culver? And I'm also, yes. That being said, do we wanna talk about the fees, or do we wanna just wait and maybe bring that up at a different time? But I wouldn't wait too much longer, because as conditional use, I mean, no, anyone can come in at any time for any kinds of projects on front of us, so.
Well, I would suggest by a percentage of all, of the project.
A suggestion or motion?
Suggestion. We'll talk about it, well, does it pay to put it in motion, and if someone, if we all feel it isn't right, then we have to rescind the motion, or?
I mean, still, they can die for a lack of a second.
Well, that's true, that's true.
I'm just saying, you know, you know, make a motion, you know it's gonna pass, so.
Two hundred and nine million dollar project, that's a hundred grand. And that's money you can use, that, doesn't take long, you all know what it costs to hire an engineer. If you wanna do a road survey, it's, bills come across the table, and they're anywhere from eighty to a hundred and ten.